Baby says we're ready.
All right, good evening. Welcome to our March ninth, two thousand and fifteen work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting, a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on these work session items. Tonight, there are three items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it in to the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. So, do we have any public comments tonight?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Um, Broadwell is not here, so Suzy, if you'll call the first item.
Our first item this evening is discussion regarding Milton Groves Green. And that would be Mr. Jack Linden.
Um, excuse me. I know you were the talk. Okay, well, I passed out agenda of what I like to talk about, and, you know, that's just, that's me. That's us, what we would like to talk about. If you guys have other things to talk about, please.
Sure. Well, let me, let me just start out, number one, to thank you guys for being here. We certainly not only appreciate your time here tonight, but everything else that you have done and that you want to do and that you're going to do in the future for the city. We kind of had a discussion back, I don't know, the end of the year or whatever, and, you know, sometimes, in fact, I said to Jack, unfortunately, some of those folks don't realize how important they are to us, or, you know, we've got so many things going on. And so, sometimes, we, you know, unfortunately, don't say it enough or whatever. And so, we wanted to try to get together so that, a couple of things. One, you guys could talk to us kind of in an informal, you know, semi-formal, but informal manner, and just kind of open it up to, you know, give us your feedback on what you guys have, you know, have been doing, but also direction where you'd like to see it go, and we could openly discuss with the Milton Groves Green Committee. So, this is, you know, totally open, and your agenda is fine to start, and then after you guys talk, the council feel free to chime in and just have some good old-fashioned discussion.
Good. The, what I've had in the agenda here is that you start off with introductions, and I figure we all know the council members, so they may or may not want to introduce themselves. But I figure we can go around our, our board here, and each of us can give your name and the position you have on the board.
Barbara Crack, Director of Natural Resources.
Teresa Sticles, Vice Chair.
Margaret Lamb, Director of Outreach and Education.
Kathy Johnson, Director of Land Use and, I guess, Building Standards.
And Jacqueline, and I'm Chairman of the group. We have one member missing tonight, that's Jennifer Griffiths, and she's the Director of Communications.
Okay, and I'll just, you know, we'll go ahead. I'm Joe Lockwood, Mayor, so.
And then I'll first do it.
Joe Longoria.
Bill Lush.
Matt Crouns.
Karen Thurman.
Rick Morick.
Suzy Gordon.
Thank you. So, I thought I'd start off with just a real brief background. Hopefully, you all know this pretty much already, but just for the sake, for the record, this group started in, in February of two thousand and eight, was our first meeting. We had a series of meetings over about a six to eight month period, and then finally decided on Logo, our mission statement, and all of those kind of things you need for an active committee. And we were, in fact, ratified by City Council in, I think it was December, October, sorry, October of that year, and we became an official committee of the city. Our mission statement is that Milton Groves Green is a citizens' volunteer committee advocating the responsible management of growth, conservation of natural resources, and the preservation of Milton's heritage and natural landscape for future generations. One other thing I would mention about the group is that we are completely open, there is no, but we, we do not require that members of our committee be appointed by the, by City Council. We, what, the current bylaw, which was just passed this past year, calls for the committee of volunteers to elect the board, which we did last November, and then that board is ratified by the City Council, which you did in January. So, the, the first thing on the agenda after background I have here is a list of the programs and projects that Milton Groves Green does and is involved with. And I wanted to, I don't, I don't plan on discussing these in detail because we don't have the time, but just to give you an idea of the sort of things that we do, there are really two, two types of things. One, one is our cleanup and recycling programs, and the other is our community education and various types of support we have for community programs. In the cleanup and recycling arena, we have, we, we conduct the Adopt a Road program. We have a Rivers Alive project, which is a yearly river cleanup. We do Adopt a Stream, which is a new program where we get volunteers to go out and, on a quarterly basis, adopt a stream in their neighborhood, and they go out and we provide chemical testing kits that they can use to actually test the quality of the water. That's a, that's a statewide program, and, and that information is all put into a statewide database. We have, we do Bring One for the Chipper, Christmas tree recycling, paint and chemical collection. We just finished that this past Saturday. Fantastic event. We had over, we had over three hundred and twenty people participate. We collected, I haven't gotten the estimates yet, how many tons of paint and pesticides and other, and other chemicals that we collected. We'll be getting the bill for that shortly. I can just tell you that we were well within the budget for that, so we're happy with that. And, and I wasn't sure I was going to say this, but I think I will. We, we decided at the last minute to put together some little buckets and tell people we were accepting, gratefully accepting donations to use for future programs. And the generous people of Milton provided us with eight hundred and eighteen dollars in.
No way. That is excellent.
So, we're going to use, that, that went into the Earth Day Fund. Yeah, oh, that's right. Volki Trash is coming up in two weeks on the twenty-first. That's a program we run jointly with the City of Roswell. And that's done down at the Roswell Public Works Facility, right next to the recycling facility that, that they're on the Henry Road. We also do the document shedding and electronics recycling with, in collaboration with the Boy Scouts, and we've sponsored other types of recycling efforts in the, in the community. As far as our educational efforts are concerned, our biggest one is Earth Day, and it's coming up on the eighteenth of April. We're madly doing our planning for that right now. We're trying to come, to get sponsors and vendors to come to sign up for that. We're doing pretty well. You know, people always tend to sign up at the last minute, but we're doing pretty well.
Where's that going to be held at?
That's going to be held at, at Friendship Park, as it hasn't the last, I was going to say the last two years, like it was two years ago and was going to be last year before we got rained out. So, it's, it's back there again this year. And I want to talk more about that down further in the agenda when we talk about the role of Birmingham Park is going to play in some of our events. So, that's the big one. And then Evergreen Schools Program, which is the program that Margaret is in charge of, is, is our support for, for local schools. Do you want to say something about that program?
Well, I don't know how familiar you are all with Evergreen Schools. It's a North Fulton program, so it's Roswell and Johns Creek, Sandy Springs, Alpharetta, and ourselves, and there's the, most of the city representatives and myself are there, and they go into the schools and do programs. Cindy used to do that. She used to go into schools sometimes and do programs. I haven't done that yet this year. But the City of Milton does something unique in that we have a grant that the schools can apply for if they're an Evergreen school to sort of do some kind of support for that sort of conservation, especially the water quality. That's what we kind of try to focus on through there. So, that's something unique that Milton does to kind of get people, more schools involved in that, so, but, yeah.
We also, a couple of years ago, were certified as a National Wildlife Refuge, the city was, and that's an ongoing program because according to the rules for that program, we need to re, we need to certify forty, I think it is, new households every year to maintain our status as a National Wildlife Refuge, this community. We also are involved in a couple of programs that are specifically with the city. The A R C Green Communities Program, the city is, is certified as a bronze?
Bronze.
Bronze Member of the, which is the Atlanta Regional Commissions Program, and, right.
Yeah, they gave us this today, so.
Tom, like?
Yes.
And we also provide volunteers, mostly through the Boy Scouts, but other groups as well, for the Storm Rain Marking Program. That's a program where we have kids go out and put storm drain markers on the storm drains that say, "Don't put your stuff in here." And, and that's a great program, especially for the little kids. They can go out with their folks and, and they get to play with glue and.
Jack, are those required to be put on on new developments? Is, is there any time at this point?
I don't think so. Kathy, is there any requirement that new subdivisions put those kinds of markers on there?
I don't believe so. Are you worried about that?
It is, it is part of the subdivision regulations that they do do that.
Oh, is it? Okay, good. So, let's see. We, we also were involved a couple, three years ago now, with setting up the rideshare program here, with, with the rideshare program in downtown Atlanta. And we've also, on occasion, hold community workshops. We just held one this past fall on the septic systems and how to maintain your septic system. And I was really surprised at the success of that. We had lots of people, and we had a fellow who was, who owned his own septic system company, who we asked to come to be available, to ask, to answer any technical questions that might come up, that are experts. We had experts from University of Georgia who were experts in septic systems, but they weren't experts in how much this across could do X, Y, or Z. And this guy, he ended up coming up to the podium and spending twenty minutes with his own patient, so that worked out really well. So, that's, those are the programs that we, that we do, and, and, you know, we're always looking to, to increase our repertoire. This, this group, this, this list of activities has grown obviously over the years. We didn't start out doing all those things, and we started out doing a few of them, like Adopt a Road, and Bring One for the Chipper, and then we've added things every year. And so, if anybody has any suggestions of other things that, that they think we could get involved with, we're very happy to do so.
Yeah, but, well, we, I'm sorry.
I just want to add another program that I think, that we started, that I think is a great program, is still going on, is with the schools, and it was kind of through Evergreen Schools, but, but really through M G G's, Environmental Education First. With the schools, Fulton County School System does not pay for recycling. They do not have a recycling pickup or any recycling at the schools, we do not. They have a trash program, but no recycling. So, when we found this out, I went out to the schools and, and we worked on contacting the trash haulers to ask them to do pickup recycling at Milton schools, which they did for several years, probably four or five years, for free, at several, several Milton schools, high schools, middle, and elementary schools. Now, unfortunately, after a while, it wasn't cost effective for them, so now, starting this year, they are paying for the service, and we were able to negotiate it down till, I think it was about fifty dollars a month or, or something like that now, and which many of the schools are paying because they're so, they were so used to over four or five years, having that recycling and getting all their kids very into that program and used to that program, and they just didn't want to just completely stop it. So, that's another program that, you know, is education to the children and getting a lot of recycling for paper in schools. So, that's a continuing program that M G G started.
And that's a really cool program. I was there one day when they were doing the collection, and it's, it's not just the janitors bringing stuff out to the loading dock, it's the kids. There's a kids, there's a group of kids that actually goes around, and the teachers all put their recycling bins outside the, outside the door of their classroom, and the kids go around and empty them all into the buckets and wheel them out into the loading dock. So, it's, it's really kind of fun to watch these things happen.
And the one thing I want to say, maybe before we kind of go around the room, as I said earlier, number one, thank you guys for, because the good news and the bad news is, the good news is, all these programs that you guys are working on and what Milton Groves Green represents is a very good thing, and our community is very interested. But the bad news is, it's a lot of passion and whatnot, and so, I said, bad news, you know, it's what folks really want to see more of and, and all that. So, I want to make sure, and I know, Jack, you've been meeting with Chris and, you know, our staff and, but us from the elected side, I want to make sure you guys knew that we support you, and kind of want to find out, are there other things that, that you're thinking of that, you know, you could be beneficial, that maybe we don't, we're not thinking about, but that we can support you, you know, if it, if it makes sense. So, you know, again, when we open up to the council, I want to make sure, you know, you guys have any questions, if there's something that maybe you see in some existing programs or some additional ones. But also, you as, as your board, is, please feel free to share with everybody here, you know, positive, negative, constructive criticism, you know, things we can all do to work together. Because, like I said, the good news is, and I know the bad news came out wrong, but the good news is, it's a very good cause. The bad news I was meaning is, you know, we need to get that out, and we need to, you know, hopefully get more.
And let me, let me say, you know, this meeting came, came out of the situation with Cindy leaving, so that was a real blow for us, and, and I must say that I've been really pleased with the way we've been, we've gotten the help of city staff on all these programs. Two things, two things happened at the same time. One was Cindy left and the board was formed. Before that, we had a board, but it was a board in name only, and so, it was just a couple of us who were officers that sort of did most of the work with Cindy, with Cindy doing probably sixty to seventy percent of the work. Then she left, the board was formed at almost exactly the same time, and we began to, it was clear, I guess, to city staff that we really needed help with us in here. So, starting then, this board has come together to really do a lot of the work, take a lot of the effort, a lot of the load off of me personally, but then also tremendous help from city staff on all of the programs. And we've been helping.
And I would say, you know, and tell me if I'm speaking out of term, but I, I do believe Cindy has offered to come in if there's a special project or something where the city wants to engage her, to come in and help, but, you know, she is still available.
Yeah, right. And she's still, she's still, I mean, I, I still give her a call once or so, once a week or so, just to find out, okay, who did we, who did we contact for this, whatever? And she, she's available to help us out. Anybody else want to make any comments on that?
Well, I, I think just on, and city staff has really helped us with that because we were kind of in panic mode a little bit first half of the week. Oh, my gosh, well, who's going to do this and who's going to do that? And so, you know, we, we had this, we said, okay, well, maybe this person who helped us was this. And so, so part of the reason also that we're here is to figure out, you know, is that a temporary thing or where do we go from here? Because it was almost like a last minute, okay, emergency mode that we needed, you know, like I said, this person to help us do this and that. So, now, we don't want to operate in emergency mode all the time, and, and so, we want to see where we go from here. And as a volunteer committee, of course, people come and go, and, and Jack and I, probably on this board, Jack and I, Jack's been there from the beginning, and then probably me after him. We've seen a lot of people come and go because people move and people are volunteering, they do it for a little while. So, so of course, there's turnover in volunteer things. So, when, we need support, obviously, from the city to, to keep it going when we are ebbing and flowing with our, with our membership.
And I'll throw out, because, you know, our staff and I have discussed it, and we certainly want to hear from you guys and get your opinion and recommendations on, on moving forward, and how much, much help you need or would like, or, you know, some projections moving forward. So, we're certainly open to listen down, obviously, but these guys have to fund it, but.
Well, and like I said, a lot of the stuff that we, that we get help with isn't a matter of money, it's just a matter of somebody on the city staff being available to us to, to help out with information or where do we go to do, do something specific. And, and like I said, we can, can, some of the areas to that. So, the next item I had on, well, any of you guys have?
Council, I have any? No, not for us. Bill?
One issue. I know a few years ago, we had all the waste haulers register, and they're all licensed or sanctioned to operate in the city. Along with the services that they're supposed to provide is a recycling service, but I know the large ones do it waste management, and I've seen Republic do it, and they have separate bins that they've placed at the different residences. There are a lot of other providers out there, not all with well-known names, and I just wonder if they are keeping up with the program, if the recycling part of the program, who's monitoring it, who's doing the police action to, to make sure that they're complying with that part of the, the agreement? I know you're not set up as a police organization, but how is that being handled?
I don't know the answer to that. Cindy was the person that was tasked with doing that monitoring and making sure that the various waste haulers were paying their fees and trying to check and make sure, for example, my personal waste hauler is one of the concierge type that drives up the driveway in a small truck, but I know he had, he actually checked with him with this. He, he puts the trash in the front of the truck, and he puts the recycling in the back of the truck, and he claims that later in the day, they all meet in one place and they transfer all the recycled material to a third, to another truck, which goes to advanced I know the first part is true because I watch him every Monday, put the trash, put the recycling, the truck, recycle bag in the back of the truck. So, I think he's doing it, but I don't, couldn't tell you anything about the rest of it.
Well, I know in principle, they probably comply, but in reality, is it all going to the same disposal site or not? I know the, the labor part of it that's involved in separating the two, but, and it is, it's a real labor issue for those guys, but it'd be a shame to think that, you know, we're complying or we think we're complying with this whole program citywide when in fact, there may be some doubt in some people's minds.
And I had a friend that in, in the city of Milton, and she had a waste provider, and she said, I want to, her daughter was on my green team recycling, so her daughter was like, Mom, we need to recycle. And so, she called her waste hauler and said, okay, we, we want to do recycling, we'll pay extra, you know, if it's ten bucks a month, sometimes, or less than that, and we wanted to recycle, and their provider, Milton, and they said, well, we'll provide it.
They're required to.
So, did somebody report them?
So, this is a couple of years ago. I don't know if they are now, so, yes, I spoke to Cindy about it, and I don't know what happened, but I know she, she called them. And, and sometimes they'll say they do. Yes, yes, we do, but then you have a customer that says, well, I've asked them several times because my daughter is bugging me about this, and they won't give me a bin, and they won't pick up. So, it happens. I don't know if that's still happening. It wasn't a tiny hole either.
What means or methods do we have here with either your program or with staff here to monitor that occasionally go out and verify that they're compliant?
Well, I know that was a standard because I know Cindy had a hand in that.
To me, it's very important. We need to find a way to make sure it's monitored and make sure everybody's in compliance. And for residential, commercial, everybody, I mean, recycling is just a simple thing you can do that really does make a big difference, and there's no reason anyone should be not complying with that.
You know, I'd like to recommend that staff, that you guys could follow up on that in the next few days. Have you got enough?
Yeah, when Cindy left, that, we did hand that particular responsibility to code enforcement, and code enforcement is monitoring that.
An update. And, well, I'll wait for other comments, but that leads into the next item of the agenda for you.
Everybody else have any comments?
Well, I'll just, I'll just say it's great to see a group of people working together to achieve the objective, and all of you, you know, doing what you guys do, I think is fantastic, and supporting you where I can, you know, I've been to, Jack, you've seen me a lot of the functions from time to time, and, and don't always know how I can help other than making sure that, you know, we, we support you and cheer you on in what you're doing from that perspective, and, and as any issues come up that we don't know, you know, or maybe there's collaboration that's needed or a conversation is needed, you know, feel free to pick up the phone and call, you know, from our perspective, because we may not know the answers, but we may know how to find out, how we can help, and I'm always open to doing that. So, I think everybody else feels the same way too, from my perspective.
Yeah, one thing I would say, to the question of what else can you guys do for us, based on what happened this past week, we have a tremendous outcry of need in this community for the paint, the paint collection. Three years that we've done it now, we, we've had to cut, cut off registration early because we just have so many people that want to come in and do it. We increase the registration every year, and, you know, as I said, this year, we collect this stuff from three hundred and twenty-two people, but I would like to see us collecting from five or six hundred people a year. Now, one, one of the ways to do that is to have two paint collections.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, we only do one today.
We only do one a year, and I'd love to see this be, being that twice a year, and I'm sure we can get the support of the committee and our, and our volunteers. I should mention the volunteers for our group.
Yeah, that's great.
Just, just phenomenal. We have a huge support from the Young and Services League for almost everything we do, and that really, so we could, I mean, this committee is, we think we were hardworking, but there's not, nowhere near enough of us to do everything that gets done, so volunteers are going to make it happen.
What are they actually in recycling paint? What should they actually do with it?
They, they recite, they, they collect paint, two types, latex and oil base, and for the, for the oil-based paint, they, they sell it, they, they combine it and they sell it to a trash-to-energy conversion facility up in North Carolina, so it actually gets used for energy. The latex paint is, is collected, and I'm not sure exactly how they sort it, but it's dark colors and light colors, and they combine it, and they get a dark gray and a light gray. And then they sell that to, I think they sell, or maybe even they give a lot of it away habitat for you, and.
And it's used as paint, it's not really?
Yeah, really. So, if we could get enough money to do, do it twice a year, that would be.
That's the thing, it costs money to do it. We have the volunteers doing it.
The budget this past year was twelve thousand dollars. We think, it costs thirty-five hundred for them to come here to set up. They bought two huge trucks and it's eight people.
Big staff.
And, and they, they charged thirty-five hundred dollars for the setup, and then so much per gallon, per pound for each of the chemicals, I think. And last year, the total bill was a little shy of eight thousand dollars. This year, it's going to be probably around ten thousand dollars for the extra people we service, but it's still, that was within the twelve thousand dollar budget that we're giving.
Do you think if we did two, that we'd have the same people coming to both, or it would be, you know, lots of different people leaving away?
Probably. You know, one of the things we did was we limited it to ten gallons of paint per person because we, you know, if we did it twice, we'd probably get those people back with another ten gallons.
I had several people tell me that they had many more gallons at home. They really wanted to come back with them.
We might get more people saving some of the light bulbs and batteries and things that they wouldn't otherwise for once a year, you know. Not a lot of people are going to save that for a whole year in a box in their garage, so it might be some people that would do more of that kind of recycling too.
So, talking about the recycling sort of leads into the next issue, which is the role of M G G and the formulation and advocacy of those conservation efforts. This past year, we had an issue with advanced disposal. They, they wanted to increase the size of their facility. They, they are now the only facility doing recycling north of the city of Atlanta. There's one south, one south of Atlanta, there's one over in Marietta, but in the north Atlanta area, they're the only facility, and they're running out of capacity. So, they tried to increase that, and there was a Facebook program, a Facebook campaign that started to discredit them, and, and they eventually gave up on the idea for now because. And one of the things I'm hoping we can do is that I'd like, our committee is interested in being advocates. in being advocates for that kind of issue. We would like to be at the forefront of educating the people of the city about the value of recycling and why we think it's important that advanced recycling does expand as opposed to what the Facebook campaigns say.
Well, I would say that having been a little bit knowledgeable about that particular item, it wasn't necessarily being perceived as a recycling program. So, yeah, so I don't know. Most people that were against it, I think are for recycling. It's just they didn't see it as being against recycling. That wasn't the issue.
And I thought, I think part of the issue was too, that when Advanced had originally come into that side, it had made some promises that it may not have kept. So it may be that if those promises it had made as far as some landscaping and stuff, if they really do keep them, I think maybe people will trust. Because I think it boiled down to a matter of do they trust what Advanced is telling them? If they trusted what Advanced was telling them that they were gonna be doing, I think they would be willing to, you know, to support it. They just didn't trust them and they felt like they were gonna be doing other things because they felt like they had not done what they had said previously. So I think that was a large part of it.
I think really we're gonna sort of, you guys ever heard of not in my backyard?
Yeah, that's what it was.
Everybody was recycle, but don't put it near me.
I think what Karen had said too, if they did proper shielding, if they did more effort and then instead of just trying to get it passed, did more community outreach, I think you'd have a lot better chance. Don't do, wait till the last minute and throw it out there because I think that's what happened and then people panicked.
Because I actually heard from some people who supported it when they originally moved in, that now were against the expansion because of some issues that had gone on, so.
Yeah, and I was involved with trying to monitor that. And in fact, there were some violations, if you will. You know, they didn't have proper erosion controls in their parking lot so that their detention pod was silting in. And that was leading over into the outfall into the stream bed in the neighborhood. There was trash that had been getting over the fence. And when we, I went, I was able to contact the environmental coordinator for Advanced Disposal. And they have, besides that facilities, which is that one recycling facility, they have a number of trash hauling facilities around. And he and I met at the site and we went over all those problems. And within a week, those things were corrected.
Yeah, we give kudos for Jack. You got out there, you met with him and took up an issue or a problem and got some attention to it. Plus, probably was helping in some of their other facilities too because of the gentleman you met with.
That was good. And I really, you know, there's two parts to it. One is the part that they weren't quite doing what they said they were gonna do. The other part was there was all kinds of really outrageous statements being made on Facebook. They had a picture of turkey vultures which were actually taken 100 yards from the Republic facility, two miles up the street.
We had some of those at City Hall for a while, didn't we? We had them out here at City Hall for a while.
I'd seen them sometimes on Bethany Bennett. I mean, they kinda moved around looking for roadkill.
So, and you know, there's other, you know, a month ago, you folks had this session with Laura and there was a really nice discussion about how do we make people in this community understand what you guys are trying to do? And the TDR program, the Conservation Subdivision program that we're trying to get an ordinance for, which was even the suggestion made that perhaps we could do a moratorium or reduction in the number of building permits that were allowed. And, you know, those are the kind of things that we as an organization, as a committee, two things. We all feel, most of us feel, we have some expertise in those areas. I personally read all of Rand Allard's books. So I know the Conservation Subdivision stuff by heart now. And so we would like to be part of the discussion about those and more importantly, perhaps part of the education that goes in. But we can let people, help people understand why these things are valuable to the community and probably more important to most people in their pocket. And I wanted to, brought that, I wanted to bring that up because if we're gonna start being an advocacy group for the city, we don't wanna do that going off on our own. We want to do it with your support.
With guidance and support and, you know, just guide us on what you would allow us to do and not allow us to do, would like us to do.
Areas we can research, feedback on, in an open-minded way.
Because I think, and I speak to, just, I had someone call me on the phone right before the meeting today, a neighbor in law, and said, Kathy, I know you're on MGG and I read about this meeting and my wife's in the hospital so I can't go, but I wanna know what the city is doing about all this development. And I, and people know I'm on MGG, big environmental person. People are always saying to me, Kathy, you're an environmentalist. What is going on with, you know, all this development? And I know they ask you that. And I know they probably ask all you guys that.
I guess we'll tell you now, but when they ask us that, we tell them that.
So, and I hear it from, you know, I know all different groups of people and people really do talk about it. And a lot of times, they think you're doing well, I will tell you. And I know that you guys are doing things. So it's important, and I think as city council, they want you to do something. And they don't know what. Something. So to do things like these initiatives, conservation, subdivision and all these things, it needs to get out to the public because I think it will help you guys as a city council for them to realize what you're doing. Just an example, and you guys know, because I was up here speaking when we had the Little River Farms, right? When they were wanting to put that event facility, and if they couldn't do that, they were gonna sell it to the developer and put 60, 80 houses on it. And there were some people opposed. So right there was a thing like, well, you wanna keep this rural view shed, you wanna keep the farms, you know, everybody says that, but now you're willing, some people, you're willing to let them build the houses just because, you know, some noise. And I understand they had a big, had a point of view. But things like that, you guys voted to allow that and to allow them, that event facility to go on. And now it's gonna stay that way. It's not gonna be houses. That's a great thing that you guys did. That didn't get enough press or enough information out to the public that that, when they ask, why do we have all this development? Well, now you don't have development, right there in that part. Great thing that you guys did. So I tell people that. That's my thing. Well, they did do something. Tell me an instance on what they did. So to get all that stuff out to the public of what you're doing, I think helps us, helps people feel like something is being done in their city and it's a benefit, it's just a way to look into everybody.
Well, if you can help us to encourage the landowners to think of alternative uses for their properties other than just building houses on one acre lots. Because, you know, I mean, landowners have property rights and we can't take those rights away from them, but we can encourage them, incentivize them, whatever we need to do to get them to look at other alternatives that can preserve the property, especially the rural view sheds in the city. So any of those suggestions you have to help us encourage them, educate, whatever we need to do to look at alternatives.
Well, I think that if we have a list, let's say we came up with a list of alternatives on what you can do with your property and actually go to realtors, who are the people that are going to be representing these people that are gonna be selling, they wanna sell their farm or whatever, and talk to all the realtor. And there were realtors that specialized in Milton. Definitely. And talk to them and say, when they wanna sell their property, just give them this list. At least, give them this list and think that these are the other alternatives they have that they should just sell to the developer or whatever. Just, you know, and I think, you know, I know personally some of these realtors that I could talk to and say, why don't at least just give them this? And who knows? Maybe, you know, a few would say, oh, why do I ever do that? Because I think some of these people that have had these family farms for years, they feel bad about that it's just gonna be all these houses now and their farms are gone. But they wanna do something else.
Well, if you can think of any incentives that we can put in place to encourage people to do that, let us know. I mean, because I really believe you get a lot more by incentivizing than you do by telling people what they can't do. And are much more successful in the long run. So anything you can think of, of ways for us to, you know, incentivize people to keep their large parcels, I mean, please let us know.
We know there's lots of, lots of ways to do that. There's lots of tax incentives, lots of other ways that you can monetize your property without actually developing. And we know about those things and we tell people when they ask us, but we haven't put together any kind of official education program.
Yes, maybe that's something to look at. I know there's complexities in there, but maybe that's something you can do from an education standpoint where we formalize with, working with the city on what we're doing, what can be done so that you can bring property owners in or whatever, maybe do a workshop.
And I think, you know, part of the problem is, you know, land, the values of land here, it's very hard to get. It's one thing if you work somewhere in the very rural, you can get some tax incentives and it offsets the cost. But here, the land is so expensive and so valuable that it's hard to even come close to what it's valued for. So, you know, you can't necessarily blame the landowners in the same cases, but what I've tried to say, what I've said before, you know, you really need to encourage people to get involved and be part of the solution. Whereas, and I'm not knocking, you know, we've got all different kinds of neighborhoods and homes in Milton, but, you know, people sometimes need to think of, instead of buying a million dollar home in a gated neighborhood, they can buy like five acres of a small house or 10 acres or get a couple of friends and, you know, be part of the solution. Live smaller, but buy some of this land rather than, because obviously, you know, if it's for sale, the developer can buy it and there are hundreds of people that, just like all of us, that wanna move to Milton itself.
You know, when Randall was here talking about his Conservation Subdivision plan, the thing that jumped out at me, and I don't know why, because I have read it in his books, but it didn't sink in when I read it, he got up there and said it. He was showing a example of a Conservation Subdivision. And what had happened in this particular design was the part, the part of the land next to the main road was all undeveloped, except for one big old house, which was the landowner's house. And this subdivision got formed with the landowner's house still intact and 20 acres around it. So there was this little square around the house that was the one acre that was developed property and the other 20 acres was undeveloped property. And that counted as the conservation land in that Conservation Subdivision, at least as part of it. And, you know, I think if landowners knew that they could do this, I would think that there's lots of people out there that, you know, granted, land is very valuable and, you know, everybody wants the money that they can get with the land, but some of these people have gotta be saying to themselves, I would love to be able to keep most of my views out here and develop. And with that plan, you know, the 80 acres became 50 acres of developed property and 30 acres of conservation land. And those 80 houses went on the 50 acres, sort of in the back away from the road. So you maintain the view shed, the farmer got to maintain his house and his land around him. And as long as he didn't look out in the backyard. So, you know, those kinds of advantages, I think people just don't, they don't get it. Yeah. But I'd love to be part of the solution.
Or to think, to even think to do that. Like I could keep my house, maybe I need money, but I have all this land, so let me sell this land so I need money. But maybe, like you said, you can keep your house and some of the land, then unless you sell, that's where it gets all concentrated and you can stay in your land and still get money. In the living house.
And you probably, you probably got less money for those houses because they were all parcels, but you still got a big chunk of what you could have got otherwise, plus you've got your house and this other piece of land and you stayed where you were. That, I wish I was in that position, you know, I'd be near Conservation Subdivision's land tomorrow.
I'm gonna make a suggestion. A lot of these things that, and let's have an open conversation about it now, but a lot of these things that you guys would like to do or suggesting, maybe if we can get you guys to funnel it through you, Jack, to Chris, and then he can get it back, you know, and we can kinda go through it and make some formal decisions later on it, but, you know, if we can communicate that way through staff, we're trying to get, you know, anything we talked about tonight, you know, but let's jot down the things that are really important that you guys would like to see moving forward and we'll handle that later.
The next item I wrote down here was the new conservation person for city, on city staff. And this came up at the meeting with Laura last month. I've been kicking around a name for this person. I'm sort of favoring the idea of land conservations to be the name of the staff person. And what I, we, you know, we lost Cindy, you had a half person slated for that position. So right now, you have, you're missing a half a staff person. And you know, you asked Chris to come back and give you a plan for how you're going to address the issue of getting some better coordination in the area of conservation issues for the city. And we've kicked it around and the consensus pretty much is that we would like to see you hire a full-time staff person, land conservations that you want. And part of that person's time could be the liaison for MGG. But as I said before, we've gotten such great help from city staff and we have a bigger board that actually divide up the work, that I think that if there was a land conservations on staff who was our liaison, they wouldn't need to spend much of their time helping us. They could really spend most of their time really dealing with trying to figure out how to make the TDR program run efficiently and how to get the Conservation Subdivision ordinance in place and all the other bits of these, you know, trail plans and try to implement Professor Daniels, Green Print, all the various things that are going on. I think it'd be easy for my person. Personally, I would like to see Laura as that person, but I don't know if that's possible. But, you know, I would think that, I know that she's a lawyer and she was making a bunch of money per hour as a lawyer, but I would hope that if she was offered the job as a staff person, she'd be willing to do it for less than $150 an hour. And that might be the right person for the job.
You know, I would say, I would say to us that I certainly would support hiring a city employee in that position. Because I think, you know, again, like you said, Jack, that person could help with MGG and they could help work on these programs. What we've found so far, having outside consultant and other people, it's not quite that connection with somebody that's an actual city employee. I'm here from the city of Milton and I'm working on it full-time, I think might resonate with the citizens and landowners better. Can't speak for Laura, but I believe, of course, you may have ordered the mask, I don't know if that's a possibility, but I do would certainly support a, you know, kinda combining the position of the half position and something else to do.
And I wonder with that, is how much specialty would you want with someone focusing on the conservation? You know, they're specializing in that and then helping with Milton, MGG, because some of the things we have are more.
Administrative.
Proceed, yeah, administrative type things that we do that, you know, someone that you wanna pay to be, have the expertise for some of the conservation, it might not be the same kind of skill set.
And sometimes though, but sometimes, especially with a larger staff, you're able to balance that out, shift some duties. If there's, you know, some high-level stuff that that person, you know, maybe someone else can do, maybe something's shifted around. More than likely, someone that's experienced in conservation and educated on that type stuff probably could be a very good tool for some of the things you guys do too. But to your point, Kathy, when it gets down to maybe some administrative work or something, maybe Chris can shift some, kinda balance that out. That'd be work in progress.
So that's something that you guys would prefer for job work to do, would be rather to have that than, and I don't know how, you know, with Laura being on a consultant basis, if that was not working with you. MGG or, you know, I don't know what your viewpoint on that was. That or, and then a half-time person or just this one full-time staff person?
Um, you know, I'm not, I don't have an exact opinion on how it would work, I'm saying I'm certainly open, and again, it would be up to the rest of council, too, but to explore having a full-time person, and, you know, whether that was Laurel or someone else, you know, whatever made the most sense, I'm just open to looking at that, so, yeah, I'm not saying exactly how this would be drawn.
At this point, there's such a, there's such a huge interest in this community for these programs, that not to have somebody who is dedicated to conservation is, is not right.
I would, I would think that would be better serve us and the community, to have one strong, a person strong in conservation, but that also helps out, maybe sometimes in doing stuff, you know, that someone else can do, but in turn, I think it's so important to have a strong conservation.
In my hometown, in Pendleton, Massachusetts, we had a, we had a building department and a conservation department, you know, they were two separate units, and, you know, the building department dealt with the developers, and the conservation department also dealt with developers, but on a very different.
Right.
Right, well, and there's that aspect of it, too, like, if the development's gonna happen, how is that development gonna happen, and how's that gonna impact, well, like, a lot of people's concerns come down to the roads and the schools and other areas that aren't just about losing the green space, but about the trickle-down from that to that link, that's a really important input, too.
Right.
Well, and I just would like to point out that we don't have a sustainability coordinator now, I mean, there's not anybody with a title, environmental or a conservation title, employed at the city of Milton right now, so, it, you know, you're talking about the way people perceive the actions of the city, and how much they're doing, it would kind of be nice to have a person filling that spot, so that we, you know, I mean, I had that comment at the paint collection, somebody said, "Wait, this is the city of Milton, didn't y'all get rid of your environmental guy?" And, I, yeah, I would, you know, "Yeah, but look what we're doing, you're here drawing on paint," you know, but there was that, so it, so it would be nice to have someone, you know, in a, in a role that has a title, that helps citizens understand, "We've got a person designated for this," and they also know, when they look on the directory, who to call, you know?
Well, and Mr. Chris is in the room, too, but we've talked about this, I mean, you know, again, I personally think the message can come over better, and hopefully, in the long run, more efficient, for the city's sake, but if the message comes over, like, you know, Milton has a, a person that works for the city full-time, doing that versus Milton is hired on a temporary basis, or a consulting basis, or a, you know.
And I very much agree with that.
Sorry, but that's just me, I'm not gonna talk anymore, anybody else is welcome to chime in on that.
I think the challenge is getting one person that can kind of handle the very technical role that we need for conservation, but also can handle the procedures and everything else that you need for sustainability, whether or not it ends up being one person, or it needs to be two persons, just because you don't want to be paying somebody, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for doing work that others could be doing at a lesser rate, so I think that's gonna be our greatest challenge, is figuring out how to balance that.
Yeah.
So that we can get the most for the, for the city.
And, and like, as far as from an MGG point of view, like I said, with, with having right now, in the mode we are, having to go to different people in the city, which they've been great, all the cities have been great helping us, you know, someone helping us with this, and the Earth Day, that's someone else helping us with this, they've been really great, and, you know, how long that is sustainable, to keep, to keep doing that, or if that's their new role, to just keep, like I said, I, I feel like we're, you know, just in emergency mode, trying to do that for right now, which is one of the reasons for this meeting, is like, how we're gonna go forward, and, so I, I don't know how much, again, just, just how much you want this conservation person to be very knowledgeable in that situation, in that area, and then to have the other person do, like I said, our procedural stuff, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it could be the same person, maybe it could, I just have a little bit concerned with that, I don't know, I don't know.
And I'll let Matt speak a second, and the rest of council, why don't we, I think we're hearing from your side, and I know I am interested in it, and let, maybe it's something we'll let our staff kind of look into, and see what our options are, and, you know, you guys.
Well, I know, and I know that's happening, and I was a little concerned about bringing it up tonight, because I didn't want to jump the gun on it, but I, I did say that I wanted you to hear off what you do.
Okay, yeah, Matt?
I was gonna say, I mean, we talked about, I just concur with the idea, I'm not, you know, I think we can get too into the specifics of what's needed, so long as anybody's able, able to learn, and able to read Randall or Renz's information, and, and also be able to provide leadership to you guys, because you'll do a lot of the organization of, of all the laborious stuff, regardless of the paint collections, and the green one for the chipper, and the boy scouts, and the men's service league, so, you know, so long as we have someone that can understand those technical things, I think that'd be the way we'd lean on that, but I just concur that we would probably need someone that has that skill set, with all the demand we're getting from the citizens to do it, so I, I agree.
Matt, Chris, did you hear all that?
I got it, you want me to address any of that tonight, or do you want me to just take?
Um, you know, I want to take a couple, sure.
Sure, yeah, I can bring the group up and speak, it's just, it's, we're talking about hiring, and what we've done since we all met as a group, and certainly have spent a good bit of time trying to figure out what is the right formula for, for Milton, I think Carrie just hit it on the head, and that, I've had conversations with MGG, I've had kinds of conversations with our staff, I've met with Laurel, who we've had onboard as our conservation person, and what we consistently are seeing is that there are very different backgrounds and skills that go along with sustainability, that go along with land conservation, and even though they both to some degree highlight as though they're protecting something, or conserving land, or recycling items, so that we have a better future, we ruin our land less, they really don't overlap in very many places. Having said that, the, the one direction I provided to our staff this morning, in our staff meeting, was to go ahead and ready up, and I've got it in my inbox, the job posting and job description that we came up with for the part-time sustainability coordinator, the one that Kathy has seen and Jack has seen, and I think it makes some sense to go ahead and push forward with that, and push forward with that on a part-time basis. Now, bringing something back and forth to the council on the, from the conservation side is gonna be something that I'm still, I'm still slugging through, and I still have to meet with some members of the council, and then I can tell you that having a meeting with Laurel last week, it is not her interest in coming to work for the city part-time, it's her interest, her main consultant, it's not her interest in working from city hall, but from, working at her house, and candidly, I told her, it is very difficult because of the constraints of the purchasing policies of the city, it's very difficult to buy her thirty thousand dollars at a time, because as those aggregate, you essentially dilute your purchasing policies by saying, you know, "We're gonna buy these in increments, so that we don't have to adhere to the professional services, part of our purchasing policies, we won't do that," so, you know, she would be, if, if we were to continue, and she and I are talking about what it looks like to continue, it might be after we go to, through a bid process, and she would certainly be able to respond to that bid, just like anybody else could, that could perform those services, but probably, jumping the gun a little bit, because I really wanted to get some one-on-ones with our council, before I, you know, go forward into too much detail there, but I just want you to know the conversations are, are happening, and some of the answers I'm providing are because I'm bound by some of the responses I got, when I talk to, I can't make people want to be a part-time employee in the city of Milton, for example, so, you know, it's certainly a value in the services that she's provided, and I very much hope that we can continue to use her in some capacity, she's very, very good at what she does, it's just a matter of trying to figure out how we do it, so that we don't violate our own policies, so you're gonna, if I were to give you some closure tonight, and say, you're gonna see the sustainability coordinator position, or whatever it's termed, to me, you're gonna see that brought forward, in the very near future, I just didn't get a chance, because of a couple of other things, plus I'm frantically trying to get a council agenda approved over the corner, I just didn't have a chance to get to it today, can't promise I'm gonna get to it tomorrow either, but hopefully I'll get to it this week, and we'll get that pushed out, see what the market bears, but then skinning that conservation animal is gonna be a, it's, it's a separate and distinct thing, I, I, I think I can with relative certainty tell you that, I don't know that we go to the market for one person and find somebody that's got all of those, all of those things that align on top of each other.
Chris, I have a question, if, for that, especially for the conservation person, if that's the route that you guys go, would that be something that, you know, with your budget, that you could, that you would hire this year, or you wait until another budget, because, you know, to do another budget, or would you be able to hire them?
We're in the process of formulating our mid-year budget now, which is a budget amendment that happens between the beginning and the end of the budget, I took some pretty strong direction from the council at work session, as, recently, that they wanted to see something brought forward, I'm trying to figure out what that something is, and it, something has to be able, to be something that I can also get our city attorney to support, and says, "You can lawfully purchase that one," so, unfortunately, I don't believe we're in a sole source type environment here, where, you know, there's, in order to be in a sole source environment, you have to be able to demonstrate that one person is the only person that's capable of doing it, and, you know, there are, there are land conservationists that, that have that skill set in this area, so we likely have to be competitive to some degree, if in fact we don't make a hiring decision, making a hiring decision is one of those things, that you can go ahead, then based upon skill and other things, you can attach a Milton job description to it, and actually bring somebody on the staff, that's a way to target somebody specifically, and say, because of, you know, because of Burt's skill set, he's got to be the one to fill that role, and I could bring Burt on, and he's giving, "Look, I'm..." Really? Yeah, we could bring you on as a part-time employee in the city, but if we don't have somebody that wants to do that, and they want to continue to operate as a consultant, that's when we end up in either an RFP, or, probably this would be an RFQ, because we'd do some technical qualifications-based bid, to make sure that we got the right person to, to then be our advocate and be our consultant, and that's the way you can enter into a long-term consulting agreement with either a person or a firm.
Not to, you know, but does everybody understand how policy works, and that's pretty typical, because, you know, you need to be on an open market, and, you know, you've let, let the public bid on it, so, in cases like this, sometimes you could, hey, this, you know, Laurel may be the perfect person, but legally, we can't spend over a certain amount of dollars without publicly bidding it, and when they get somebody in from, you know, Arizona or something, you never know, you know, with the local.
So, part of us moving forward, because the part that's moving forward is a little bit easier than the part that I'm still trying to figure out exactly how to, how to move it forward, and in what format, but those conversations just happened last week, so we're not, you know, we're not dragging our feet with it, I just want to make sure it's right, and it's not challengeable. Great, thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, so the next item I have on the agenda is Birmingham Park, that's not a misprint, I didn't mean, probably was wrong.
Yes.
Yeah, that was really fantastic news, really.
I purchased it, yeah, but at least the deal has been agreed to.
I was out there somewhere, on the other side of the, the trespassing.
I went up there for a picture, we didn't step across, they weren't, they were, but... Good police officer.
I was gonna say, Jack, you're on record.
Oh, sorry.
On the correct side, I was just guessing.
That's right, that's what he meant to say, that's exactly what he meant to say.
Yeah, yeah, so Birmingham Park, this issue came up, you know, we had a debate amongst ourselves about where we were going, where we wanted to have Earth Day, you know, Earth Day, the first three years was at Birmingham Park, and then, two years ago, we got the Friendship Park, and then last year was gonna be there again, and this year is gonna be there for a second time. When that issue came up, I went to Chris, and I said, "Is there any possibility you could have it in Birmingham Park?" And, so he and I met up there, and we had a nice, long discussion about what the issues were, probably all aware that there's been a lot, a lot of vandalism at Birmingham Park, there's been vandalism of the barn in that central field, and the field itself has been chewed up by four-wheel-drive trucks and other vehicles that have been tearing new, new wheelies in there, and tearing the place up. I talked to Jim Craig and Roddy Moat about getting out there, and they planned to get out there and grade it and seed it, so that at least that part is gonna be fine, Jim Craig had, had a bent, had a gate put up, so you can't get to that part of the park with a vehicle, for the vehicle, there's posts in the ground that allow you to walk or walk horse through, but, you know, not big enough for a car, and, and so far it's worked, the only, the only wheeled vehicles I've seen any evidence of, and I've been up there like twice a week for the past six weeks, is I think I saw tire tracks from a motorcycle up there this past weekend, but, but no, no cars.
Yeah, it'd be rough.
To be honest, there have been times when I've gotten called, somebody, "They're not up there, Rob," somebody's up there, "Don't worry about it."
So, anyway, that, and the issue about the fact that we still don't own that central piece of the park until it gets officially transferred from the county, we agreed that it was probably, given the fact that we now have Bob Ellis and the elegant folks that voted for us to get Bob Ellis's park, we probably have the votes we need to get them to allow us to put Earth Day up there, but it wasn't in shape to do it. The other issue is, is handicap, and I've met with MDAC up there a couple times, talk about the issues, and, you know, what they would need for parking, and they, they agree that the parking that's available on the side of the road by the main field up there is probably okay, it's, it's not concrete, but it's good firm ground, you could, you could unload a, a handicap van in that area, but a lot of the handicap folks didn't think that it'd be possible to, to wheel their wheelchairs over, one of the, one of the ideas that we had was to get, to, to hire a fleet, if you will, of golf carts, and, and, you know, have six or eight golf carts available, so anybody with handicap can get in a golf cart and get taken around to the various schools, that's a possibility, there might be ways of actually conditioning the ground to make it available for, for a wheelchair, I'm not sure what you would do, put some sort of crush and run down, and maybe level it off, I'm not sure what you'd, I bet you there's a way to.
Paint it.
Yeah, so, and, and the other issue is, there is a, around that central field, that central field where the barn is, is about fifteen acres, there's a track around it where the jerks with their, their off-wheel vehicles have gone back in there, tearing around, bringing them apart, and they actually cut ruts that are good fifteen-inch deep, and what I, what I'd like to see happen is that we get out there, and we grade those down, cut, fill in the grooves, fill it with crush and run, compact it, it would take care of the problem with the ruts, or safety issue, but it would also provide the handicap folks a place to get out on the park, they could actually traverse that whole field with their, with their wheelchair, if it were properly graded, so, that kind of thing, for us to say it is what we'd like to see happen by next year, so that we can reconsider the, the question of whether or not the best place for Earth Day is Friendship Park or Birmingham Park.
Or Providence Park next year, is there a way to do it there, with the grand reopening of Providence Park?
Yeah.
Well, you take a lot of work, there's no, there's no place.
Handicap issue could be a problem there as well.
Yeah, it did have handicap parking at one time there, when that was.
Well, the parking is not a problem, it's just that there's no field there to put vendors there.
But, but we've been a victim of our own success, and every year, the attendance at Earth Day has grown, and we estimated about fifteen hundred last two years ago, and at some point, we will simply outgrow Friendship, I mean, we're kind of constraining ourselves this year to fit there for a lot of good reasons, but it's hard to imagine that we could continue to have the festival grow and stay there, so we really have to find a place to put it.
And, and the reason we went, as we pulled, that we went to Friendship Park a couple years ago, was because it's a brand new park, and we wanted to showcase, we talked to Jim Craig about showcasing the park, we have a new park, you know, and having it there, so people know, those people know that, and you can, that was a big reason why we had it there, plus it was, it was a little bit easier.
And it's got that paved around it, so it's.
For a small event, it's beautiful, with a paved walkway around it, so, it looks like this.
Are you gonna speak to the possible events that we?
Yes, I was just gonna say, the other thing we thought about is if we can begin to do the renovation, and remediations, get the grass going up there again, get the, what's still in, we'd like to propose that we put on a, a citywide picnic on, in terms of something, and maybe a citywide trail hike in the fall, and get people out there, and really use it, see it, realize, yeah, it's the biggest park in Cook County, and, and all, and, so we don't know it, but lots of people don't know that.
And the folks at MDAC, when we met with them, did indicate that they, they're very happy for there to be events out at Birmingham Park, that they, they don't feel excluded if there's events out there, because, you know, Earth Day's a big event, and they want to be included in that, but, you know, if we had picnics or trail hikes out there, that, that didn't, you know, the people that were representing MDAC, meeting with us, said that that was, they liked that idea, because several of them, one of them in particular goes out to Birmingham Park a lot himself, and he, he very much enjoys it, so, he, he liked the idea. So, he liked the idea of, you know, letting people know about it, so.
I'm all for doing as much as we can at Birmingham Park. So, and also too, because myself, actually, the Birmingham Crossroads area needs the exposure from a business perspective too. So, any traction that we can get up there, I think is a positive thing.
Are there certain things, or Jim is Jim Craig, if you're the first answer, there's certain things that you don't, other than people driving around four-wheel-drive vehicles, there's certain things that you don't want there right now? I know it's a, yes, it's a huge part, but there's certain things that we don't want happening there, other than people driving around. You know, what's the general rule about that? Do you guys know?
I guess important thing would be what will our insurance allow without us getting in trouble? And I'm sure people driving four-wheel-drive vehicles around the park is probably not what our insurance company wants to see.
What can be done and what can't be done there?
And there's a sign that tells you what you can and can't do, right? Yeah, a little small one. It's not.
Well, it's actually a big sign in very small print.
Yes.
Get it on top of it.
And you have to want to read it, you know? You have to be the sort of person that's inclined to want to follow rules, to stop and read them.
And the fellow who pulled up one of the signs out there and then took it down to the gas station on the corner and stood there with his sign in his SUV and asked him to take his picture, she basically Facebooked him. Probably didn't read the sign.
Yeah. Well, maybe it doesn't say you can't pull up the sign. Maybe that's, maybe we need to be more specific.
Did a City of Milton police officer visit that person? There was some visitation.
Okay, good.
One thing I would like to see up there, and obviously as people are discovering the park, there are trails that are around there, but they're not as clearly defined as they could be. You know, if there was maybe a map that we can create or something like that.
I have that.
You have the map?
Well, we do Earth Day.
Okay, so, well, I mean, I've been back there before, I just haven't seen it or something that you can hand out to people or something that we can post up there.
Posting it at the barn there. I'm not sure how it's going to last, but, you know, I'm the one who got there once a victory.
And do we need scouts to go through and remark the trails? Maybe that would be a good equal.
I was hoping we're gonna do Earth Day now this year. The Boy Scouts are the ones that clear those trails and they are more than willing to go out and.
Reblaze or?
Cut off those trees that have fallen over and.
Is that on the website, Jack?
Is what on the?
The trail map?
No.
You could start with putting it there, maybe.
Yeah.
So we could refer people to it.
It's true. If you sort of search.
You can post it in Facebook.
For information about Birmingham Park on the internet, you don't find much, you know?
Well, when we did the cross-country trail behind Milton High School, I actually ordered the big map holders that you see at all the trailheads. And those actually aren't wood posts and everything, that's actually, you know, recycled material posts made to look like wood and they're behind the glass. But they have managed to last at Milton High School now for 10 years. So, and we have them at every entrance to the trail at Milton High School and it's big color laminated map.
Yeah.
But being behind glass and in the ground, you can see them if you're going down Birmingham Highway, you can see one also right there at the parking lot where y'all did the Christmas tree recycling.
Can we do that through public works?
That's what I was just wondering. Who would I be talking to?
Probably Jim.
Or Jim.
You could go through Jim and then Jim.
Yeah, but, I mean, those have managed to last and really still look pretty nice considering. And I don't, they weren't that expensive. I was, you know, surprised and we just installed them ourselves, so.
Yeah, okay. I'll check with the department about that. We'll probably be doing a little update of the trail maps. One of the interesting things happened is a lot of new trails have strouted out. People have gone off on their own and created enough traffic.
You were just talking about Birmingham Park.
Birmingham Park.
Well, you brought up the term trails and several years ago, we came up with a trail program or trail plan for the entire city. And I don't want to load more onto you for using what you already have now, but I'd like to bring that topic back up in front of us.
Funny that you mention that because I met last Friday with Dr. French, who's the Dean of the College of Architecture at Georgia Tech, who was responsible for that original trail map. And he has students in classes that are very interested in doing that kind of projects to us. In fact, they have a whole big group now that's doing a lot of, with the disability community. And they've got a whole program just for that. But they are really interested in doing some more projects with us. And I've got his card right here. Like I said, I met with him on Friday morning when he came to speak to the foundation. And so, you know, I was planning on getting with Chris about that later, but, you know, they did our original trail plan and are very much interested in, he even remember doing the one from Milton and Johns Creek, he's the one that brought it up. So, very much interested in whatever, you know, they can get their students to do to help us with that.
I think because of certain funding requirements or limitations we had a few years ago, it kind of was pushed back. I think given the increase in our revenues here now, that maybe something the council would want to bring up again and consider. I think in addition to just the spot parks or the Birmingham, Providence, and Bell Memorial, I think we need to talk about our linear parks. You know, linear parks are trail system. And there's so many opportunities out there with existing facilities, roadways and other facilities, I think it's worthwhile. People use them. They're not officially dedicated, but Bert can testify the fact that there's some of us here on council that use these facilities, undesignated trail systems.
You know, Professor Daniels mentioned those in his presentation, his recent presentation. And there was a discussion about the creation of a citizens committee to begin to identify land that would be used for TDRs. And there's a strong connection between the TDR program and the trail plan because if you have something that's designated as a potential land for a trail, that automatically sort of in the TDR project, in the TDR pipeline, it automatically comes to the top of the list of land you would like to see dedicated to the TDR program. And so, citizens committee, and there was some discussion of when he made his presentation about maybe we're not ready for a citizens committee. I think we ought, I think we ought to do that. I'm sure there are members of the county that would love to be on that. I'd like to see what happens so we can begin to, you know, make some progress for this project.
I think that comes under your purview, that type of organization. I'd certainly champion it.
So, I guess are we allowed to do some events at Birmingham Park that's not good there? Is that a good question that we ask?
I wasn't asking.
I was gonna say. We've already decided we're doing.
For forgiveness.
You wouldn't be the first.
No, we'd obviously need to work out the details. We did permission from public accounting to do what we're talking about. But, I mean, I'm just thinking that if we're able to make the, to fix the park up, that I think that would be a great way to.
Start using it.
Get people comfortable with the idea of knowing where the park is. We already have a lot of dog walkers and horse people out there every day. But, you know, even though there's lots of people who use the park, there's lots and lots more that don't know anything about it.
It feels, I think it feels like there's a connection between the increase in vandalism in the sense of the park's somewhat abandoned. I mean, there are people that are out there, but it isn't a thriving location and so it's sort of in the shadows and so it's easy for people to go up there and misbehave. And so if we're, if we're out there more often, if we're cleaning up the trails, if we have, if we invite the community to come out for trail hikes or picnics, then it becomes a place in the sun and there's not this shadow for people to sneak in and vandalize.
I think, didn't we do, it was back in 2007, we did a big cleanup, I think initially. Yeah, we had a lot of, we got a lot of community participation in that too.
Well, we did talk about the picnic was maybe, maybe the idea is we would invite the community out to help clean the park and at the end, there would be a picnic. No, 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 no. You gotta make them stick around, but you gotta make them stick around for the food. So, so that was, yeah.
We go clean up.
And then clean up.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, again, that's certainly, if you guys have some ideas and some events you want to do, obviously, you'd run it through staff first, but I'm pretty sure there's support on the public side, if you want to take advantage of this as much as you can and it's a good process.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's it. On our side, was anybody else?
I want to address the Birmingham Park thing just real quick, just to balance a couple of those comments with some current events. You know, yeah, that's a 204-acre park and it sits at the outskirts of the city and it's dark and it's not lit. And that's a excellent place, just like Providence Park was back the day before it had a fence put up. It's an excellent place for our young adults to find, to have their version of fun. Their version of fun doesn't always match our version of fun. But I can tell you, you know, when you respond to calls up there and drop in a police car, that when you have the advantage of sitting in the dark where the police car is driving down the road with its headlights on so that it doesn't run into a tree, you have pretty good advance notice that somebody is coming to try to rain on your parade. But the good news is, is here recently, we do, we do know that it's been younger adults that have been out in the park. We've made quite a few charges here in the last couple of weeks of people that have been in the park and have vandalized. We're pursuing it from insurance collection standpoint, where we go after the person who vandalized, insurance to fix the damage. So, I don't want you to think that this, that there's this park that is hidden in the shadows, that doesn't have any enforcement around and that we haven't identified people that are responsible for some of those things. So, right now, we're going after that insurance. Number one, as a first recourse, we shouldn't leave that sitting on the table. So, we'll use whatever we're able to recover to fix some of the rutting that you see. You know, the interesting thing they had, I guess, the last time they were out there is they had their bottles of alcohol tied to trees and hanging. And I guess there was some thought that if it wasn't in a car on any one person, that we don't know who was responsible for it, so.
They're much more creative than we used to be.
Strung up in the trees, you know, I've not seen anything like it, but, and, but I don't believe anything at this point in my life. So, yes, I know that, just know that there's been some charges made and that we've identified who we think are probably the frequent flyers out there, which is a good thing. And, so.
And that kind of work gets around too.
It does.
This isn't a cool place to hang anymore.
That's right. I don't mean it literally, but it's a whole mindset of, you know, shoot one train a thousand that, you know, people, word does get out quickly, especially amongst that community. Teens, teens talk and teens talk quick, so. Anyway, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the park.
Is there a difference now that they put the chain or their fence off the yard? Is there a big difference now?
You know, they're a ramification. Unfortunately, when you have a park as large as it is, when you have people with four-wheel-drive vehicles, they will find, it's almost like water, you know, they find a way to, it'll find a way to flow. And just because this one pipe got shut doesn't mean that they won't find another pipe. So, you know, we'll have to watch that. I think it's helped gates, in my experience, keep honest people out. So, you know, we'll just have to keep actively engaged up there to make sure that if anything else happens, we stay on top of it, but.
Chris, this is the problem now in that field that's at the front of the park, the one that actually borders Hickory Flat Road, with the new property that was just purchased there. That field that comes up from Hickory Flat Road, I've noticed the last time I was there, there were very real heavy ruts in that area.
I don't know.
Which is not.
I'm not saying that that's incorrect, I just don't know enough to say, to say, yes, I've seen that myself.
There's no, that's not blocked off at all. You can just drive in and get to that, as opposed to the field of the barn in the middle that we had at Earth Day Festival, which is now closed off by that gate, which, as I said, seems to me to be working except for perhaps Hickory Flat Road.
Good. See anybody up there as frequently as you're up there? Please keep.
Always cut my phone.
Keep it, yes. Keep it on speed dial because there's a high likelihood that at some, you know, some times of the day, we'll even have somebody who's actually at Fire Station 43, either completing a report or stopped to use the restroom or did something. That was the way that the last time we were, or whatever, yeah. That was the way we were able to spot it. The last time was the firefighters saw people going in and were able to say, hey, let's send so-and-so back there. It was the day of the snowstorm.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, it was the day we were preparing for the snow to come in. I was trying to think why I knew about it.
Yes, cold was out, right?
Yes, I knew about it because they had loaned me a radio for the day so I could not have to bug the police and firefighters with updates, you know, as to what was going on, what roads were closed.
And our police had nothing else to do that day.
Right. Exactly.
Anyway, thank you all for watching.
I think that's your limitations.
That's not one day.
You're asking for a friend.
I have to say, about 40 years ago, I used to do stuff like that. They had a little run-in altercation with the police. So, 40 years moving forward, and I'm sitting here one day talking to one of our officers and we're talking about where we grew up and all and we both grew up in the same place and one thing led to another and it's like, hey, I'm the one that used to chase you around when you were a kid. All right, anything else?
No, I'm, I'm, I'd just like to thank you guys for coming.
Appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you, very much appreciate it.
Yeah, we're excited and, you know, keep you guys moving forward and it's benefit to all of us, all of our citizens. If you guys get some enjoyment and satisfaction with it too.
Well, a lot of folks compliment on the types of things we do here.
Very important.
That's always great.
And I'd like, I'd like to say, I appreciate what you all do and we appreciate Milton Rose Green. And I can almost say without exception, we all support you. But I'd like to point out that there are some of us that are greener than others.
Yeah, the two of you.
The two that are wearing the green shirts.
And appreciate you guys, even when we had the Broadwell Pavilion and we opened that up and you were helping with the trash and recycling and stuff there. Appreciate your service there too.
I wish the, I wish the pavilion, you know, would come at Earth Day. Obviously that's, you know, Friendship Park is, the boundaries aren't quite big enough, you know, but it would be needed for pavilions because that'd be kind of the good displays in the pavilion.
Yeah.
Maybe one day we'll have a pavilion at Birmingham Park.
Well, I think.
Or in the, whether we could have a workshop out there, you know, one of our educational workshops at the pavilion.
I would love to see a pavilion in the parking area, but that's.
No, I mean, I mean, we could have, I meant we could have MGG workshops at the Broadwell Pavilion.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Utilize it now.
Nobody's trying to overdevelop Birmingham Park, Jack. Don't worry about that.
Well, again, thank you for everything you did and thanks for your time tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And, you know, and Jack and I have had conversations where, you know, sometimes we don't, you know, I'm a couple of the last years, if there's any, you know, constructive criticism from our side, please feel free to pass it on or something, if you think we can do better or if I'm helping you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Guys, I missed it about early. So, I gotta run.
What the hell did you come here for, it's breakfast? Are you kidding?
We have a stuff line.
Oh, God, all right, that's, you're right.
There you go. All right, guys, I'll see you.
Good to see you, man.
I'll get some extra. Buy a little water?
I'll bring some water. See, I'll have it already.
I'll go get some more.
Oh, no, I'll get it.
You'll get a few more?
A couple more waters?
Yeah, a couple more waters.
That's something, I'm just trying to think, I was having this thinking, I found I could help them for a while afterwards.
We have to fund some, it's part of the.
Oh, there we go. They, um, yeah, they're always looking for flashlights and they've got these tall words up.
It was perbed of other waters.
So, it might be.
He's about six days. Yeah. Water, uh, I can just.
Well, they flew ash. Are we off?
No, we're on. We still got.
Well, they flew ash and, are we off?
No, we're on. Let's see, I guess, Michelle, you're gonna present the next, so our next item is an update on Welcome to Milton City Signs and discussion on the design of the Thomas S. Bird House.
Senior, senior.
Let's just call it the Bird House, guys. Come on, why, why do we do this to ourselves?
Grab attention. Just like old homes.
You talked about back in the early 2000s?
Early, not, not that.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great. All right, so we're gonna talk about the Gateway Signs, the program that we have. And we've been putting up signs for the past several years. And then we're also gonna talk about the Thomas Bird House sign that we should be putting in in the next month or two. Okay? Okay, so this, these are the signs that have been installed since our last meeting. We put in the sign Web Road and Highway Nine. Actually, we had that in already, but then we put in the Bloomington Highway sign at Cherokee. And then next slide, this is just a nice snow, snow picture of.
That's a Christmas card, is what that is.
Exactly. So I, I ran out to take this picture of the sign right there. So that's the one at Bloomington and Cherokee. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this is the one we put in. This is one of the smaller signs is that the Broadwell Pavilion recognized the mayor next to the sign. And then I, again, I ran out to take the snow picture of the sign next, next to that one. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this is the map that we've been working with as far as the locations of the large signs. And we've put in two so far, the red dots on the next slide. And these are the remaining where we figured the smaller signs would go. And we put in the one at Crab Apple, which is the yellow at the bottom. Okay? And so we're just tracking along with the next signs, next slide.
You know, has anybody got any, um, comments? I mean, I've got positive comments on the sign, you know.
Okay.
I haven't really heard anything, nothing negative.
Okay, so, like I said, we added two signs since the last sign update in August. And then the next ones that we're in pursuit of is Cockburn and Winwood. We figured when that, is it the daycare that's going in? On this side, we'll take a look to see where a sign might be able to fit in that intersection right there. And then also, we've been trying to do the one at Forside County Line on Highway Nine. Of course, there's wood road widening happening and we're working with GDOT on when they figure out where the right way is gonna be so that we could actually put a sign there. So that's the other one that we're thinking of. But also, if you guys feel that there's another area in Milton that feel that that's where we should be focusing on and just trying to get a sign there, let me know. We'll go out and do our surveys and whatnot. If you feel like there's a better spot that we should be focusing on, yes, too.
You have a list up there, about three slides.
Do you want to go back to the list?
You said a priority list?
No, no, not really. Let's, yeah. This is the large sign list where we looked around and, and we felt like we had space for a large sign. And then the other map is the smaller sign.
How about?
The smaller sign, okay, yeah. This one is the smaller.
How about 372 there, Green Road and Library and that?
Mm-hmm, you, you like that one?
And also right at Arnold Mill, when you're leaving Crab Apple. I mean, Arnold, 140 is such a heavily trafficked road. I think it would be great to have something.
Mm-hmm, on 140 when you leave.
140, yeah, for people heading north to.
To, to Cherokee?
Yeah.
So then we'd have the sign coming in to Milton going south.
Well, coming in going south, you'd have to do it at the Cherokee, well, I don't know where you have to do it. You change jurisdictions like five times going south on, on it.
Is it too far north to do it right there at Fire Station 41? You think that's too far?
It'd be, it'd be nice to have it a little south of there so people would realize south of Green Road was.
It's just real easy to get permission on your own property.
Right, exactly.
And I think ideally, you know, visibility wise, it'd be right there at the Kroger.
Right, right.
Right, just when you first come in, right?
Okay, so near the Kroger?
Yeah, right north of the Kroger.
So that's too strange, right?
Is it, is the Kroger, is that Roswell?
It's an Alpharetta.
Is that Alpharetta?
It's an Alpharetta.
That's Alpharetta.
The Crab Apple Tavern across the street's in Roswell now.
It is. I know, after I got hurt. Is that, is that after the tornado hit?
Okay, so those two areas are sort of in a similar era.
One question, I know we, on, on Highway Nine, we got the main, we got that, the corner at Web Road and whatever. Was there a reason we didn't do anything like right down by the, because there's the Walmart and that whole area, isn't that Milton?
Yeah, Milton starts, yes, near the Walmart, but the opposite side is Alpharetta where the Kroger is. And so we looked at the site along, I guess, where that new bank is, is there. There was so many, it was such heavy landscaping there already, that it was hard to stick one in there.
Right on the corner there.
Yeah.
Is that old corner, though?
Not the, well.
Chase and RVs.
Walmart corner.
Yeah, right, that side.
Alpharetta.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then again, with being a state route, we have to be so far off the.
The road.
Right, yeah, of the road.
I'm just curious.
Mm-hmm, so it was just a difficult spot. The Web Road was the only place that we had space, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
You have Bethany Bend at Strickland and Bethany Bend at Forsyth.
Yeah, that's an option. It's not just, it's one or the other, I think. Because the Bethany Bend at Forsight, looking at it, there's no space. Because I have another file, if we wanted to go with all the sites and pictures of all the sites. And it's just property owners on either side and it's just a straight road and no real place to say that you entered. It's just a prop, properties, houses. But at Strickland, there's a, a, there's a T in the road so that when you sit at the light or the stop sign, you would be able to see the sign. And so it's a better spot, in my opinion. That's why I added Bethany at Strickland, because it's a better site. But it's not actually property line. But the other spots that we have, we haven't put, put it at the line as well, so.
Wouldn't it be more effective or include both of those locations if you had it at Bethany Bend and Morris? Morris?
I have one at Morris.
McGinnis?
Yeah, I have one on there as well. It might be on the large sign list if we move back. Yeah, this one.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So you, some, some, something in there you think we should be looking at, okay?
Is that gonna be like right by Red Apple?
Yeah, yeah, there's a big pole, the electric pole right there, yeah, power line. And the sign would sort of be there and you could sort of mask the power line with the plantings and so on, so I thought it was a good spot. Okay. Okay, so let's, um, go to... Okay, so are we ready to talk about Thomas Bird? Okay. So, um, this is what we have so far as a draft of the Thomas Bird House sign. Says, um, Thomas Bird House and the home of Milton Senior Center. Now, I'm here and that is Thomas S. dot Bird, and we'll talk about that as we move on. So let's go to the next slide. This is the proposed location for that particular sign. This is Hookwell going north and this is Bloomington Road and we'll have a roundabout. And so it'll be northwest of the proposed roundabout. And it will sit up right there. So that's the proposed, um, location. Next slide. So this is what the sign company made up for us with the parameters we gave in terms of, um, we needed to have 32 square feet and so on. But we'll probably have to scale it differently. I feel like there's too much fence on either side. But we'll, we'll work with that a little bit later. Next slide. Okay, so this is the discussion. We need to figure out what the final name would be. Thomas S. Bird House, home of the Milton Senior Center versus Thomas S. Bird, comma, Senior House, home of the Milton Senior Center. So what's the discussion on that?
I like going to the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, me too.
Do we know for sure that it was senior, not junior, that built the house?
So what's going on?
I don't, I don't care. Personally, I would prefer some, something other than Browns, but that's just me. It seems like that. We have an awful lot of Brown.
The only thing you may have checked in the, I'm not sure etiquette wise if there's a comma after Bird and Senior.
Okay.
I know some when you go to the Roman Dukes, there is, or there's one or the other. So I might just wanna double check if the comma is, is proper and it may be in that case, I just can't remember.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'll check. Mm-hmm.
But I think it helps that you separate when you have to have a senior, if, if we were sure that's the designation. It sounds better than the Thomas S. Bird House, you know, just in, in, in thinking about it.
Okay, so Thomas S. Bird Senior House.
In my opinion.
Okay.
Look like we got everybody nodding.
Everybody's nodding, okay. All right, so, um, next slide. Okay, so this is on.
I have to do more questions to do, but I don't, again, I don't know if there's a way to do it. It didn't have to be small. But, you know, I'm almost wondering if we could add a little word on there that explains why, so to, you know, maybe a real small type, obviously, so it doesn't overpower it, but, you know, you know, it's just Thomas S. Bird Senior. Maybe the bottom says, you know, he was the first owner of, you know, silk home or back in 18 blah, 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 or something. You know, something just cause what people are gonna drive by and so why didn't it have Thomas S. Bird Senior House? So there's some way to put a little designation of who he was.
Is it? Is that what the historical, would that be something on the historical marker? Is that where you would?
Well, um, what, you're talking about the sign?
Well, I'm just, I see historical.
Okay, the reason why I put the, yeah, the reason why I put those examples at the side was, um, there was a question about why are we not using the shield as all of our signs throughout Milton? And the idea with coming up with this type of sign for the, what used to be the Hookwell House was, um, it was a historic house and we felt like, um, historic markers tended to have the dome at the top with a shield or a seal at the top. And so that was the design that we came up with. But it's up for discussion because it's the oval versus the square and the colors and.
I kinda like the square, but I, I agree with Joe. If you could put just somewhere at the bottom of it that said, home established and it doesn't even have to be the exact date since we don't know it, but.
You could even say.
By Thomas S. Bird Senior, what, you know, yeah. Yes, sir.
Well, we gotta think too, where it's gonna be sitting, is that gonna, that's gonna be somewhere.
Well, people will be, well, people will be going through the roundabout a little slower, so they'll be able to.
Well, it's not something, you may not drive it by, you may not be able to read it, but occasionally it's only stopped there. You know, a few people will read it and.
Established such and such.
When people are saying, well, why the name is Thomas Bird, it's almost a little rough, but he was the first, or he built the mine back in early 1800s or whatever. Well, maybe that's something foreign historic mark.
That's what I'm.
That you go into greater detail to describe.
Like up by the house or.
Maybe that's up closer to the house. Yeah, I write that, but I was just thinking on the sign.
We are looking to put a dedication plaque inside the actual Thomas Bird House as we walk in, which will have the dedication and the date and all your names as well. But that, we could also put a blurb on that plaque as well, so people can see it.
Are there, are there extreme limitations if you, if it was designated as a historical house? Is that, that's with the state of Georgia? You know how you have that?
No, there aren't. I mean, usually a local historic society would do those plaques like they've done in Alpharetta for those little. And we could have one made up, certainly, because it is a local, locally designated historic site. So we could have one specifically.
I'm just thinking if we, I mean, do something like we're talking here, but maybe that's something extra too, to actually add a little, that adds a little bit more credibility that we preserved the house, we saved it and it's historical.
Yeah.
Why not get it designated with the state historical site, so we actually have it?
Or we could even do one, I mean, just ourselves now and put in there.
That's right.
When we purchased it and we purchased it to preserve it.
Exactly. We have the story, it is locally designated. It is designated by these historic commission. So we could certainly put up a plaque that, you know, we, we have that right to do that.
With a lot more details.
Yeah, the story.
And then, but we have some similar complimentary signage that, you know, directs you.
Mm-hmm, directions to signage, yeah.
That sort of thing.
Yes.
I'm, I'm with what Karen had said. I like the lower sign as a differentiation. The other ones are fine for entrances, but because this is something different, I like the, it, I think it would make it stand out more so than welcome to the city of Milton. You actually have a destination versus you just entering.
Okay.
I still like more colors, so, other than brown.
Right.
And brown, and brown again.
And, um, this one has three colors.
Or, but, but, but not green.
Suburban.
Yeah, uh, Milton with Gateway Signs are three colors, the lighter brown and the chocolate and white. And then this one, well, it's just the white and chocolate. But should we add the lighter brown or not, or add some different color or?
I don't like the colors. But I, I, I like brown.
You like brown, okay.
I think we need to.
Big, it stays consistent is the only issue. And we started down that path. I mean, if we had, if we had a different color scheme, it would be good, but I don't know how. We're gonna start to mix it up. What about pink?
Okay.
Really got some color to do with them.
Okay, so, um, so we'll go with, with this and with that scaling, you think?
I like the horse logo.
And, okay, let's do it.
I think so, seal.
And the fencing, similar to the Gateway Sign? All right. Well, um, yes, that's what I had. Any other comments or suggestions?
Who else?
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you.
What's the slight address, what's the slight completion?
We had a walkthrough last Thursday. It has quite a bunch of lists, so probably create a walkthrough. So where? There it is.
How do you get over there?
The voice came from the corner.
The voice came from the corner.
I think we're still checking for a late march.
Just mention that maybe we, maybe have a board next to it.
Sure.
Dedicated to it, and also have a committee session.
Yeah, there's, yeah, if you wanna, I know we've talked to Councilman Thurman and the mayor, we've talked about the desire to have a town hall meeting somewhere this spring in Milton. You know, parking will always be our issue until we have sidewalks built to other paved surfaces up there, or, or create some type of a bust-in situation, we only have sixteen spaces, so if we anticipate a crowd, it probably is gonna be difficult to co-mingle those two events. That doesn't necessarily mean that I don't think that, that either of them are not warranted, but we'll, yeah, we're working on putting together a town hall meeting right now, shooting for the end of March. I do want to just let you know, I've got to, how certain are we that it is Thomas S. Bird Senior? Michelle? How certain are we that it's Thomas S. Bird?
I am not certain.
Okay, we need to check on that before we, you know, I, I just listened to the discussion. I believe there's only one Thomas S. Bird, I believe there's a Thomas something other initial Bird, so I'll need to get back with you on that.
Norman researched it, confirm it with him.
I've got his notes, and that's why it, it causes me to question whether or not we need the senior, as to whether there was a second Thomas S. Bird. We'll, we'll look at that to make sure that we don't name it, there's too many, there's too many Birds in the Bird House, but... We'll, we'll make sure that we get the right initial and that we don't, and that we don't all of a sudden create a senior if there really just was only one.
Will we check another sort, I mean, will we be looking at the titles of the deeds or something?
Yeah, we've got it assembled, and it's, yes, yes, answered your question, yes.
Because I would hate to base this all on non...
On rumor and folklore, correct. No, it's, we go back to the oldest recorded Fulton County deed book that we can get to to come up with this name. There's probably owners of the property prior to that. It's just, that's as far back as we can get in a document.
All of you say by the, by the CEO, just, yeah, yeah.
I've got all those documents.
That's one of those things, you finally figure out, Bird owned the property next door and not this property, or something like that, I'd hate to accidentally make this thing, yeah.
I do know it was owned by Bird, a couple of them through the generations, and I wanna say that I do have Mr. Broadwell, he's, he's trying to find as many direct descendants of that lineage as he can that might still be in this area, I guess he's working on. I have him, I think it's like fourteenth generation he's working on at this point to try to find people that are direct.
There's a whole flock of them.
That would, that would a very big house to have a whole bunch of, a whole flock in.
All right, so if you please call them next time.
Our final item this evening is discussion of amendments to the Personnel Policy Handbook Regarding Social Media Policy. Mr. Ken Girard.
Thank you very much. I don't have a PowerPoint for you today, but I'm still gonna sit up here if you don't mind, just because it just is great to stand. I've been given the, the privilege of presenting this one, and I'll tell you, I love it because I deal with a lot of folks in government, and having a healthy social media policy is the, we, listen, that puts Milton on the cutting edge, because there's a lot of jurisdictions in the next couple of years that are gonna wish they did have one, and they're not gonna have one, and they're gonna wish that they had had one, particularly one this as well, as well done as this. But let me tell you how we got here. The first iteration of the Milton social media policy was actually adopted, I believe, in March of 2014. It was, it was good, but, but could be made better, we thought, and so I think we had a consultant come in who provided some guidance, and of course, Chris checked me on this, but provided some guidance on how to make it better. And of course, as I fully encourage, he went to my office to look at the guidance and some of the specific directives and language that were put in the proposed revisions to the policy, and I couldn't get comfortable with them for a host of reasons, not to mention least of which is, anytime you're talking about a social media policy, what you're really talking about is speech. And so it's filled with First Amendment implications, because since we're a government, we have to be very careful about how we impact both the speech of our own employees, as well as those of our employees when they act in their individual capacity. And so we looked at it, and we could not get really comfortable with a lot of it. However, it did at least raise some concepts that the city manager was kind enough to basically give to my office, working with Jason, and said, "Let's figure out how we can, in a lawful way, install some of these concepts into our existing policy." And so that's what you have in front of you. I will tell you, I, Megan, who did a lot of the work on this, one of my attorneys in my office, put together this just list of bullet point after bullet point after bullet point after bullet point of all of these jurisdictions and other situations where social media has made the news. And I'm sure that you are, like many other elected officials, we don't want to make the news with respect to our social media policy. Typically, we want to not make the news, because when you make the news, typically there's something sexy to write about, and we don't want that, right? So the, the point I'm making is, is it's better to get on the front end of this, from the standpoint of having some good, solid regulations that you're comfortable with, that on the one hand, try to protect the city of Milton, on the other hand, try to protect all of the various rights and privileges that our staff and our elected officials have, as well as the users of the sites, which would be our citizens. So having said all that, as far as a way of background, let me tell you that one of the reasons, in addition to just the notion that the original policy could maybe be made better, was the fact that Milton has a substantial social media presence. I mean, I went to the Milton website today with a specific vision of looking at all the presences we had, and of course, we have a Facebook presence, we have a Twitter presence, we have a Flickr presence, and we have a YouTube presence. A lot of jurisdictions don't have that, not at least that many, and the reality is, is it's becoming pervasive. Everybody uses it, everybody expects any entity they interact with to be on it, whether it's government or even private entities, and you can just expect that it's gonna become more and not less, all right? So with that said, what does this modification do? There's actually less here than meets the eye, and what I mean by that is, it does some things, the, one of the more significant things that it does is it pulls an additional class of individual within its grasp, and that class of individuals would be officials, which in the first version were not included within the reach of the policy. So who would that mean? That would mean elected officials and others would come within the, sort of the rubric of this social media policy. So that's one thing, if you want to talk about that more tonight, please, feel free to ask me those questions. The additional thing that I would say, as far as significant that it does, is it addresses in some detail regulations with respect to the use of social media when you are not doing it under, on the city-designated site, or as part of your city-designated role. In other words, when you're acting as a private citizen. Because we all know that even though we have private capacities, you do, I do, the city manager does, you never really can shake the notion that you still, in many respects, are the face of the, of your employer. And so in this situation, when you have sort of kind of a high-profile role in the city of Milton, the public, irrespective of the fact that you're interacting on a, in a private capacity, may still view you as the city of Milton. That's not just a city of Milton issue, that's every government issue, that's every private employer's issue, is that folks continue to work for who they work for, and a lot of folks watching your online postings may in fact believe that you're acting as an agent of the city of Milton. We're trying to address that here. And so I think if you look candidly on page four of the draft, if you have a red line draft, you will probably see the majority of the modifications on page four.
We don't have a red line draft.
You don't have a red line draft? Okay, well then, if you don't mind, I'll walk you through, 'cause I promise you, this is the nuts and bolts of it all. Although I'll also say this, you know, in addition to just the content base, right? When you post, there's content. There's also things, for instance, like open records implications, or even record retention implications. If individual posts, if individuals post on the Milton, the Milton-focused and the Milton-sponsored social media sites, are those subject to record retention? I think they are. Are they subject to open records? I think they probably are. And that's what this policy does. Again, cutting edge. Georgia law is trying to catch up, I would say it's about ten years behind now, used to be about twenty. So we're doing better, but it's just expanding too rapidly. Social media, electronic communications, the way people interact, it's challenging for governments to keep up, for, for even private entities to keep up. But with respect to guidelines, and here's the way it's identified, for personal social media sites and content, that's a big component of this. That is literally when our employees or officials, if you're gonna be subject to it, act on social media sites. First of all, paragraph one, use common sense. Use common sense when using personal social media sites. Remember that what you write is public, may be public for a long time, and has the propensity to spread to large audiences. I mean, I know that probably sounds self-evident to most of us, but a lot of folks have not appreciated the fact that social media, things that you publish online never go away. Forget hard copy documents, something sent electronic, it is terribly difficult to ever take it back. Terribly difficult. Number two, employee, and again, I'm not trying to read, I'm not gonna read the entire policy, but I'm focusing on the high points. Number two, employees may use social media on their own time, right? And using their own equipment, and may use social media to express thoughts or ideas, of course, as long as they do not negatively impact the city of Milton's policies or business. And to ensure that, here is a list of topics that are not allowed. Okay, so number one, and these are things, of course, that get into the area where their First Amendment protection begins to go away. Number one, hate speech or libelous speech. Makes, makes a lot of sense. That's not gonna be protected, and that's where we have the right as Milton to say, "You can't do that online if you are working with the city of Milton." Number two... Yes. Oh, great, yes, there you go, perfect. Number two, sexually harassing speech, as defined by local, state, or federal law. Number three, statements, photographs, videos, or audio that reasonably could be viewed as malicious, obscene, threatening, or intimidating, or that might constitute harassment or bullying. Number four, obscenity. Number five, fighting words, extortion, you get the idea. I mean, this is the sort of speech that the city of Milton would have, a legitimate interest is ensuring is not advanced or propounded by our employees. We also make some recommendations. I'm gonna flip back, if you can, if you can do that, to page one. Now, this is not a change, but I think when you, when you hear this, you might say, "Aha, this makes sense." Under general guidelines, paragraph three under B, so this would be B three, if discussing city-related issues, but not posting online content as an approved representative of the city, all personnel must make it clear that they are speaking for themselves and not on behalf of the city by displaying a disclaimer. And you may think to yourself, "Wow, that seems sort of challenging, and other than it's in the policy now," but how many times have we had folks even come up to the podium that have been with city of Milton, maybe tribunals or committees, and, and make that very same declaration? "I'm here, but I'm not speaking on behalf of whatever agency I'm with, I'm speaking in my own capacity." It's the same requirement, because really, what you see is that there's some of these social media sites are nothing other than, but basically, they look like a public forum in many instances.
But that's tough to do on something like Twitter, when you only have a limited number of characters. Your disclaimer can take up a whole Twitter thing. I mean, you know, it's...
Right, and, and again, that's a good point, and, and I wanna go back too, is that we're really, we focus that pretty, pretty narrowly on when you're talking about city-related issues. Most of the time, that wouldn't even apply, because you're gonna be discussing whatever it is that people are discussing on social media, which probably, for the most part, city employees that may be posting online individually are not gonna be discussing city issues. Now, that may not be the truth, may not be the case, but if a city employee is discussing city business online, I gotta tell you, I think that's a fairly reasonable requirement, because otherwise, I'm afraid our citizens are gonna be confused as to what capacity they're speaking in. If they're talking about Falcons football, that's fine, there's not gonna be any confusion on that, but if they're talking about some initiative the city's pursuing, I think it'd be real easy to come, become confused.
But you're making it sound like it's a real clear distinction. I mean, on Facebook, I mean, I'm seeing posts all the time where people say, "Well, what is that they're building?", you know, right across from the Alpharetta Crab Apple Government Center, where the old Crab Apple Community House used to be. Now, if I reply back, "It's a pavilion," that's city business, but you have to put the big disclaimer to say it's a pavilion when you're basically just stating not an opinion, you're just stating a fact. And I think that's a difference, there's a difference there between stating an opinion and just stating a, a simple fact.
And I think that's fair. I think that's fair, that's sort of a real-world application to this, right? All, all fine to talk about Ivory Tower, but that's, that's when you're gonna have some discretion by the folks that are tasked with, with implementing it. I mean, it's a policy, it can form the subject of discipline. If an employee breaks the policy, it can be subject to discipline, but that's when you'd have your city manager and others in positions of authority that would say, "To your point, that, that's not enough, that is obviously not the problem."
But I think we need to make, make a differentiation in this policy for that, so that you don't have a big gray area. If, if you're stating a fact as opposed to stating an opinion, I think it could be very, a very different thing, or else you just basically don't answer anything, and when you don't answer what, I mean, the stuff that gets put out there is just crazy.
It's a, it's a good point, and that's the purpose of discussion about it, because, I mean, it, it is difficult, I will say this, and, 'cause you're hitting on something great, it is difficult to draft a one-size-fits-all policy for all of the various forms of social media that are out there, because for the very reason you just said, some forms of social media capture very, little, small soundbites of communication, right? As opposed to a Facebook post, which you can tie quite, quite a bit in. So that's, that's a great point, I get it, I understand that.
I mean, if you post a picture from a city event, you have to put a disclaimer with the picture from the city event, because it's, yeah, this is my opinion, this is a picture of it. Yeah, so I think you've really gotta, I mean, I, I think it's, it's worded in a, too much in a black and white type thing, where most of this is, is gray, I mean, it's...
Is the, is the point that maybe you would like in the policy, there to be a little more discretion plugged into the policy?
There needs to be some discretion in it, 'cause I mean, you know, you shouldn't have to, if you post a, a picture from the grand opening of the pavilion, you shouldn't have to put, "This is a disclaimer that I am posting this as an individual and not as a council member, that I enjoyed the grand opening of the pavilion."
The only, the only problem with that, I mean, just so I'm, I'm very candid with, you plug in too much discretion into a policy, it becomes unenforceable. And my, my point simply being, our employees won't know.
But if you don't put it in there, and, and you're leaving the discretion as to something that, you know, is not spelled out, then you've got a policy you can't enforce, because people aren't adhering to the policy, and you're not enforcing it when they don't adhere to it, so...
Sam, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I think that on C three, there's a part in here that says that purchases a policy individual posting does not need to perform any disclaimer and can post it in a place on their website, when we're talking about the city's policy. But that also applies that they can put it in their information on Facebook or Twitter, cover those individual posts as well?
You're talking about on C three?
Yes.
Yeah, all on, all online content posted is a representative of the city, on the city's behalf. I think that's more limited right now to only when there is a posting on a city sanctioned site with authority of the city. But I don't know that we have built into what would address Councilmember Thurman's concerns.
But if you go into right above B, the last paragraph above B, that's what concerns me.
Well, I think what Sam is maybe saying is if you make a disclaimer one time on your personal stuff, then that would...
And your personal information.
But if you're, if you're posting in response to something somebody else has put on one of their sites, I mean, how do you...
C, C three is talking about record retention requirements and open records applicability, and it's indicating that if that language is put on the city sanctioned site, it doesn't need to accompany every posting, and that's to try and put citizens on notice that what they write on city sanctioned sites is gonna be subject to public... See, most, some people may not understand that, some people may not understand that if they engage the city on a city-sponsored site, that information may, may be subject to an Open Records Act request and come out later.
I think what Sam is trying to get at is that Karen, on her Facebook page, if there's a place that you could do a... there's a place that you could do a blanket post, one time that says the disclaimer, and then everything...
But if you post on somebody else's, I mean, thing, I don't know how it...
If you have, if you're fine, I mean...
But I think if you just change the way this reads, it says, if, if city personnel post data reporting or implying to be on behalf of the city while using a social media site without approval, the city's not responsible. I think if you just change the wording of that, so that it wasn't, it made it so that it, you're implying to be done as an agent, directly as an agent of the city or something like that, so that it's, it really is means that, you know, you're not, it's not that you're directly representing the city in that statement itself. So I, I think maybe if you tweak that wording, it would make sense.
Jason, if I could, Jason, go ahead, Jason.
Well, the, the space issue's not an issue on Facebook, right? So we're not talking about that, we're talking about Twitter. So what we do right now is on Twitter, as to Sam's point, under your personal information, what we actually do is we have a policy document that is online, it's like a PDF, right? So then I bit.ly the link, which means I shorten it down so it doesn't take very much space on Twitter, and then it lives in our Twitter info live with our account all the time. So if an employee, if there was some question of that, we could have a legal statement for employees of the City of Milton. Are you on Twitter? Do you want to talk about city business? If the person says yes, okay, we just ask that you put this in your, and, and just the link, it's about five or six letters.
So that every time you send a tweet out, you'd have to have that with it?
No, I'm, no, 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 it lives in your information.
So it'd be in your profile?
It's just your profile.
What about Facebook?
We, we have a, we have a similar policy for Facebook, but if you're talking about opinions, then you could, you could easily in Facebook, because there's no character.
But I think, Karen, you're saying...
What I'm saying is, I think if you just change the wording of this a little bit, so that, you know, it, it makes it so that if you're just responding, yet, yes, people do know, you know, you may work for the city or whatever, but if you're not responding as an official, in a official cap, capacity, that it's not quite as...
Awkward.
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, like you said, it's...
Because if you did that every time...
Yeah.
What kind of, is it put in this?
This long paragraph, right?
Yeah, but yeah.
But I wonder if, if like Jason said, if you put that, if you have that somewhere on your Facebook profile...
I don't mind if you want to tell me how to put it on my Twitter feed or Facebook.
We could do that very easily. I mean, basically, all I do, all we would do is, we'd have to do the same thing we do here. We would have a, a legal document that I would PDF, I'd put on our archive site, then I just bit.ly that link and send it to everybody, hey, if you're on Twitter and you ever want to talk about the fact that you work for the City of Milton, just put this in your, in your, your basic information about your Twitter user.
Yeah, that, that, that is non-obvious to the nth degree. Because now I see somebody's tweet, and if I don't go to their profile, I have no idea. Now, I'm just saying that's the way it is. I'm not picking on, I'm not picking on the idea as much as I'm saying there's just no way to protect in some circumstances what we're trying to do here. But what I would say is that rather than jump on the case of Twitter, which is a very difficult one to manage because of the limited amount of text that you have, we, we keep this sort of up at the 10,000-foot level, because I got to tell you, the stuff that's in here, we need.
Oh, absolutely, I agree.
We absolutely need, and so it doesn't make any sense for us to pick apart at it too much for, for some of these extreme cases. I work for an employer that, I mean, this is, this is mild compared to what we enforce in terms of social media requirements, and, and it's for a good reason. We can't, and mostly it's, it's for employees. It's, I mean, elected officials can choose to mess up at their own, you know...
Not according to this, we can get fired by Chris if we do.
Well, no, that's...
Chris can terminate us.
We haven't gotten to that point in the discussion yet, but...
I think the charter is probably...
That's, yeah, I don't...
What I would say is, when does it make sense for employees to comment in a questionable fashion about, you know, the business that the city is doing?
Well, I'm not worried about them commenting on a questionable fashion, I'm worried about them posting something that could be very positive, but it could be a violation of the, this policy, and if we're not enforcing it, when they do that, something positive, then it makes it difficult for us to enforce it if they do something negative, the way the policy's written.
Well, now, okay, the policy anticipates that city employees in their private capacity may in fact be discussing issues involving Milton. You're, you're correct that at least one paragraph suggests there's going to be a disclaimer, and to the extent the council says that's unworkable or unmanageable, we could focus on that. But this clearly anticipates, you don't check your First Amendment rights at the door just because you work here. You have the right to, to speak on any matter of public policy. And in fact, but, but on the other hand, it sort of balances that by saying, you know, if you're going to be online and you're going to be focusing and discussing on issues impacting Milton, do we want to have any protocols that say you need, you need to be careful? Because you could do a lot of damage to the City of Milton as well. I mean, that's, that's the point of this, and that's where, from a public, public policy perspective, y'all need to debate this, because you can do some. That's, it's not unique to Milton at all.
Yeah, I, Milton speaks from a select group of people when it comes to our social media. In other words, we don't, we don't have, everybody that's an employee of the City of Milton doesn't have or shouldn't have the ability to speak on behalf of the city through our social media outlets. Okay? And if we've got, if that's possible, we're just, I, I can't believe we're that lucky that something hasn't happened thus far. So, so the, so the reality is, official news and official information comes out of the affi, the people that we've empowered to do that, and everything else is personal opinion. Did you see a lot of elected officials that just want to shout out on their personal Facebook page? I guess the assumption is that's kind of their opinion, you know, from the general public, but obviously...
I don't see the disclaimers attached to, to all other, yeah.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, the average person, we just assume it's your opinion or whatever, but I guess it could be, you know, legal randicating at some point or something.
Well, I mean, you know, it, I will, there are people here that know a lot more about online social media than me, and I don't interact with it that much, but I will say this, at least on Facebook, you typically put together a profile of yourself, which includes your employment, and so that's a real easy fact to find out about you, and I don't know if Twitter is the same. I assume you have an online Twitter profile that indicates...
But you have so few characters that you can express.
On my Facebook.
A lot of times it's severely traumatic regarding...
So, that's where I think that Facebook maybe is more of what this is focused on, say for instance Twitter, just because it's so easy to link up who you are with where you work.
So Karen, what's your point, what are your views?
Well, I mean, according to this, you, you cannot express your opinion if it pertains to anything city-related unless you display this disclaimer that states, this is my own opinion, and not necessarily, not necessarily an opinion or position held by the City of Milton, the mayor, or the city council. I mean, it says that if we express anything, we have to do that.
All we have to do is make sure they have to include that in their tweet, and then they can't tweet anything else.
They won't be able to say anything else. She, she's right, I mean, that's, that's what it says.
That's what it says.
Is that, is that something that could, I don't have a strong opinion on that, but could apply to general...
Always on City of Milton, but not to elected person that has a problem with putting that up there? How did we get elected officials in this equation at all?
We're employees, we're employees, and we're officials.
We merely aren't employees, are we?
We're not employees.
Oh, technically, we are an employee. According to the IRS, we are an employee, we get a W two.
Well, you can link it up as well.
Well, I mean, you, you have the right to remove that. I mean, just, if that's a concern, just take it out.
I mean, that's, Karen, if that's... No, we should have every ability to dig ourselves whatever grave we want to jump in.
We want to, as elected official, yeah.
We should.
No, the real question is...
We don't want to get into trouble.
Well, that's really what we're talking about here.
The real question out here is maybe to exempt elected officials from that, because in their elected position, they may be...
What was the reason to include elected officials in the, in the thing in the first place?
I mean, I'll let the city manager, but I will say this, from a public policy perspective, if the, if the concern is, is who is the voice officially for Milton, why would you be exempt? I mean, one of you speaking may not in fact reflect the, the, the public policy position of the City of Milton. My, my point simply being is, you can take that off, but we start with the notion of we want to have on official policy positions, we want to speak with one voice. That's the point.
Could we have a disclaimer in this policy that says the only official...
Is the City of Milton's site.
News, or whatever the word version is for the City of Milton comes from, from X.
From the City of Milton Facebook site and whatever.
Yes. Would that alleviate some of the, the, the concerns of that?
Well, I don't know if the policy is put together to drive debate, I mean, really where the policy is based, what, what, what you all decided it is, but I think that the consensus was, this would make good sense the way it's wrapped it down, but if we want to un, not leave the policy behind and back away, I, I think that's fine too.
Can I, can I, oh my goodness.
Slap. That's why we got them all turned out with their directions.
Hear myself tomorrow morning. Quick question for you, because if, if we're, if we're kind of in this B three, and it says, if discussing city-related issues but not, but not posting online content as an approved representative of the city or the city's behalf, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I don't see why we wouldn't just make some statement in here that is affirmatively saying that elected officials are approved representatives of the city. And that then cleans up, or take elected officials out. You know, either make them approved so that they can travel outside of some of these other more onerous requirements, or just say, have the council say as a matter of policy that, you know what, I am elected, and being elected, I get to have an opinion, and that opinion I get to have might be different than everybody else, but I still get to advocate for it, because that's the beauty of a democracy.
Right, and I, I'd agree with that, but if you're giving me two options from a legal perspective, I would, I would push back against an option that has in a written policy that says one council member can speak as an agent of Milton, however, rather than just taking elected officials out all.
But I mean, doesn't our charter state that the mayor's the one who speaks as the agent? I think in our charter?
It does, but we don't really have on social media.
Yeah.
I mean, no offense, but all your folks talk around, who are, who are, like the other cities, but you know, I mean, see, and when I say that, I don't mean with respect with it, you consider that's that person's opinion.
Right.
And believe me, we, we post a lot less than a lot of other councils do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You see it on somebody's personal Facebook page or page, you just...
You just say it's personal, right?
I mean, some of it may be back, but like to Karen's point, it's a pavilion, it sounds better.
Like, it is a pavilion, it was a great event, in my opinion.
What are we trying to protect ourselves from?
Right.
You mean with respect to what, with, with keeping you in the policy?
Because, yeah, because this policy isn't going to keep anybody from putting anything that they want to on their Facebook page, and it's not going to prevent anybody from tweeting, and it's not going to prevent anybody from doing anything that we don't want them to do. In other words, there's no, there's nothing in a policy that can prevent an employee from doing something we don't want them to do. The policy is supposed to make sure that the employee is aware that if they do, if they violate the policy, there's some kind of action that can be taken against them.
That, that's right, and with respect to elected officials, obviously, you see the inherent weakness of that.
Right, right.
But, but it's also a declaration of your policy, and so, I mean, a lot, a lot of regulations, folks are self-regulating by you. I mean, they're censured, you know, you can, you can be clinically ostracized, but obviously, you're right.
So rather than go to the links that we went to to describe what you have to do if you're going to comment, and you're not supposed to, or, or carve yourself out of being an official communicator of the word of Milton, why don't we just say, here are the people that communicate on behalf of Milton. If you're not in this population and you want to communicate, make sure everybody knows you're not speaking on behalf of the city. And violating this policy, we're going to fire you.
I mean, this, this says officials and employees are not allowed to use their personal social media sites to display any video, audio, pictures, confidential work data, writings, logos, or any other communications that identify their employment with the City of Milton.
That should be true for employees.
But, but any, but employees that are ribbon-cutting can't identify themselves as employees of the City of Milton?
Well, there's, there's official, there's official photos for that, there's...
But they can't, they...
We don't need the employees to...
They can't forward that or anything to...
Well, that's a little bit of a special case, and you're very good at finding these special cases, Karen, but...
What if they were at the picnic and they took a...
You shouldn't, you shouldn't have, the Milton should have a policy where videos and photographs taken at the worksite are not allowed to be posted.
At the work, at the work site, but what, what about when you get onto social sites?
Yeah, well, okay, there we go, yeah. It doesn't happen at all.
That's the policy now. Right? That's not even, that's not even, I mean, that's the policy we have right now. The only things that are being changed are the inclusion of officials, and then there's more specific guidelines as to what employees and officials can do on non-city chartered state, uh, uh, social media sites. That, what Councilmember Thurman just read, that's your policy now. I mean, for good or bad, that's what you've got.
I mean, some of the stuff is very good, and I mean, officials shouldn't, officials need to agree to avoid persistent unwelcome posts, pictures, audio, I mean, yeah, that's, that's good, but, you know, like I said, I can't post a picture of the, the great pavilion thing and without providing a policy.
You can get it to where...
That's really easy.
Yeah, I think that's where, yeah, I think that's where...
If the council wants more discretion, that's...
Because to me, everybody's counsel, personal Facebook or social media is their opinion, and they can promote the, you know, if they want a picture from the pavilion, they're thinking of...
But if Milton, Milton Groves Green has, if Milton Groves Green wants to post a, a picture of their paint recycling thing that says they're a member of a committee of the city, and it's, you know, on, on their, their Facebook thing...
If that goes out on a city website, or a City of, what am I saying, or a Milton Groves Green one, and then that person personally could forward that or share it or...
But be mindful though, that once you begin saying certain folks can, can, can present stuff that's positive, well, you can't get into content, and then you can't pull it back when it's not positive. And then you're going to get around these people, and you're going to be furious that someone sabotaged some Milton initiative, when the reason we did it was because we liked the good stuff, we liked that there's positive messages, but we're not so crazy about the negative messages.
So what, what, should we, you know, should we eliminate it altogether and, you know, everybody behave and do what's, what's your...
Well, I, I got up, I'm going to eat my words, I got up and said, thank you all for being on the cutting edge, because at least you all are having the debate.
Right.
And there are a lot of governments that aren't even having debates. This is, this is the leading edge, folks.
But is this one of those debates that show up and if you can't wear them, then you don't really have a...
Well, and, well, again, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I just, I didn't have a problem with this policy when I read it, okay? Because, again, the policy's not going to keep anybody from doing something stupid, that's just going to happen. The policy's there to just say, hey, if you do something stupid, here's, and this is what we think are stupid things, unless you protected yourself, this is what's going to happen.
But if, if you're trying to enforce the policy, when somebody does something bad, they're going to say, wait a second, these 20 other times that people violated this policy, you didn't bother to enforce it, so what kind of policy is it?
Well, we've got to enforce the policy appropriately. Are you saying that it's an unenforceable policy?
I'm saying it's unenforceable the way it's written, because if people post things that are good and you don't enforce it against them because they're a violation of the policy, when somebody posts something that's bad, that's also a violation of the policy, how do you enforce it?
But Karen, Karen, I, I'm sure you're familiar with this, you guys have to have similar policies where you work. You have to.
Yeah.
Okay? So, so we can't just have everybody, I don't care if they're speaking good or bad, posting stuff on behalf of our companies on the web.
Well, see, that's the big thing, is when do you speak on behalf, and who do you speak on behalf?
That's why the policy's in place. That's why the policy's in place. If you're not the master tweeter for the City of Milton, you don't get to tweet. For the City of Milton.
Well, the city, understand. Well, that's, I think, what... That's the heart of what you want to state here, but we get into the gray is, when it's on your personal stuff, what can you do, what can't you do? Well, I'm not speaking for the City of Milton. I'm speaking for myself, and I... Do we have to put that disclaimer on everything? I think that's what starts this.
Well, that is what's...
That's what it says.
That's what it says. And of course, one thing that Councilman Thurman raised earlier was, what is a city issue, and do they ever plan to show over into what is a state issue? And is he ever planning to show where it's a federal issue? And it is. And there's no question that to do this correctly, you're going to have to have some discernment at your senior city staff levels to be able to enforce this. But I got to tell you, if there was a perfect, airtight, black-and-white way to draft one of these involving the areas of speech, it would be mean. I mean, this is as... This is pretty good, but it's not perfect.
So, Chris, what was your idea, or what was the collective idea the management team had it, train our employees about this policy?
We're going to have to... We'll actually have some really, probably lengthy training, really complete training, and then we'll have the employees actually acknowledge, receive of the policy with some type of a signature sheet.
Yeah, we have to sign something every single year.
Yeah.
That we have read the policy.
It'll be a training that will be rolled out by the HR department.
Adrian, you're one of you. Do you think that this was a good approach to vexing issue?
Well, I guess I relied upon folks that I trusted to work on it and bring forward a policy that made sense. And when I've got our HR director, and Ken's office, and other experts that are in the social media world that Ken used to get some concepts from, as well as the feedback that you provided us, because you were very thorough in your review, because this interested you, I don't know that I was any more of an expert in it to be able to override any of that collective work product of that group, which is why I agreed to it.
Yeah, so, I mean, so let's just pretend for a second that this didn't impact us as city council members, and this was just an internal staff-related thing. Would you be putting this policy into place?
Well, I think it would. I mean, because what we just highlighted was that we already had a policy in place, and this one, we're just bringing forward as a product that we think is better. So, yeah, everything that I'm seeing and hearing in the trends in managing employees is that this will be one of our top, if not our top, issue to deal with in the next, very, very short term.
So then, the real question is, what is it about the policies that we, as council members, object to? Or are we willing to support the policy and put it in place?
Our policy at work basically says that, you know, anything we put out there cannot portray the firm in a negative light, not that we can't put anything out there. And I think that's a big differentiator between it.
That is a huge difference. And that's the very thing we can't do.
Right.
How do you... Yeah, because how could you objectively determine what negative is?
Right.
Which, to some degree also, is how do you objectively determine what a fact is? Because if we all had the same set of facts, we wouldn't need lawyers.
That's true.
But that's what lawyers do every day, is they debate facts. So, you know, if everybody agreed, there wouldn't be a debate. So, I, you know, and I agree, like, something as simple as, "What is that going in across the street?" Well, that's the Broadway Pavilion. That is a single factual answer to a question. But there will be... There could be questions that are answered that people will disagree on what the facts are.
And the way that, like I said, the way this is written, you can't... We can't even post pictures, so...
But that's where y'all normally didn't decide, a baseline policy level, was do you want one city sanctioned, city manager or his or her designated voice on the City of Milton or no?
We have to.
Well, I think we...
I know, but I'm saying...
We're talking more of personal...
I think we're good with that, because that makes a lot of sense for employees and stuff. Control it, and then don't be posting on your personal, saying, "I'm representing the city," and this is... No, this is the place where the city speaks. The other is your opinion.
I mean, I think if it said in here that if you're posting something, you're posting it as an individual, not as... It is deemed to be posted as an individual, not as a representative of the city, then...
Yeah, can we isolate toward in the ordinance? That's the policy. That's what it says, but, you know...
Instead of having to put a disclaimer that you're not...
She puts a picture of ribbon-cutting or something, and, you know, it's great, but...
The question is, is can we do that? The answer is yes. But just be mindful, though, that if city actors, including officials and, let's say, we're back here in a year, and you've got a city employee that is, I don't mean to say off the reservation, but doing their own thing on a personal, online media site, and not providing any clarification, whether they say they're on behalf of the city or not, do we think our citizens could be confused by that online presence?
Then we go, and we separate employees versus elected.
See, I'm with Joe. We can hang ourselves. People do it all the time. If you're elected, the people elect you, you're not... You aren't hired for a position. You're an elected official.
I think for certain things, you've got to separate the two. Other things, I think, you combine us. Like I said, hate speech, sexual harassment stuff, you know, we need to all follow that, too.
So the thought would be, and I don't want to get ahead of y'all, but the thought would be on the general illegality, the unprotected speech.
Right.
You're happy to be involved in that. But as far as just the ability to post online, generally, protected First Amendment speech, that sort of thing, even if it involves city issues, y'all would look up to it, agree with you.
I think you have to allow a little bit of that, because otherwise, what are you... Do we have to just find, what does the city say? Well, we're going to have different versions.
Or otherwise, we couldn't even have a campaign website.
Right.
I mean, it's...
Naturally.
So your campaign website would have an asterisk at the top of it, and say, "This is my new address."
Ken, isn't that easy? Is it that easy, including them in this policy in places with respect to unprotected speech and exempt them from protected speech?
That's what they're proposing.
Somebody delivering a soft food?
I think there is a difference between, as far as general behavior. General behavior, we all want to be above board in what we say, and we don't want to say, "I'm representing the city in this." But I think you have to have a little bit of flexibility as an elected official, because you are being elected to basically represent what you think can bring that content in.
Well, no, I think it's only natural, too, on a board of seven people, you're going to have differences of opinion. So I think we ought to have that flexibility or that latitude to express differences of opinion. It may not be the opinion or the consensus of the entire council, but as elected officials, that's why we're elected. If we're all thinking alike, then somebody's not thinking.
That's a... Those are pretty easy changes.
So the only place I'm still a little bit gray, then, I guess, if we've built some consensus around the fact that elected officials want to be included in unprotected speech and exempt from protected speech, in what manner do we have them maintain their protected speech posts for the purpose of responding to records requests? Because if I get an open records request in for Councilmember Thurman's Facebook page as they relate... A post as they relate to the City of Milton, how are we going to...
What? Yeah, that's a... I mean, that's a question that we actually may need a couple of days to discuss, because what he's asking is, is if you are commenting on social media about City of Milton issues...
It's subject to the act.
Subject to the Open Records Act, the retention laws.
Oh, well...
Because it arises out of, or is in the course and scope of the operation of the city, and, you know, we're going to argue, and it may be what it is.
Well, then I'll give them to whoever needs them, but I'm fully interested.
Having an open records request following the city and the city's employees to harvest information from Karen Thurman's personal Facebook page, I don't think makes sense. Having her have to respond to an open records request makes sense.
Well, that's right. I just want to make sure that I put something out, just, I wanted to make the statement that, you know, as we're talking about these things, just remember that even if we make an exemption from protected speech, and you're in a personal place, that should that records request be delivered upon the city, it will be required of the council member to be responsive to it.
Yeah, we got a great example of that with the Hillary Clinton emails this past week, so...
Well, I mean, this is not atypical. I mean, and forget about social media, but there are, yes, there are officials that transact business in other jurisdictions that do it primarily on personal email. And so, when a record request comes in, it comes into the government, but then we have to reach out to our official and say, "Give us what is on your server," and hopefully, they've kept their documents for a couple hours, right? So the same is true of your personal place, only you have the ability to delete posts on whatever it is, whatever baseline it's made to face the corporation is, but you would have the ability to delete those on there.
Right.
Is there a retention time period?
Yeah, you know, again, I have not researched the right revision.
I mean, what happens, it's the same thing as text messages, only you have the right to delete your...
Yeah, I understand your point, and I know what we're seeing right now, is we're seeing an influx of companies that are specializing in social media archiving, that have come, you know, that I get emails from that say, you know, "As the law's going to evolve, and as these things are going to be required to be maintained, you know, let us..." Right now, we've got the barracuda system that archives our emails. Well, now we're... You know, emails are almost, I hate to say, emails are almost like has-beens, and now we're into this new world, and who knows what the next new world is. But it's almost like technology is having to keep up with technology.
And the laws haven't kept up with it.
Because the law has been a long time dealing with. I mean, it may be at some point, you know, the laws, instead of just change, and says, "Anything related to the city must be done on a city-related server, subject to city retention schedules, so there can be no deletion of these documents." And to get about Milton, I can tell you, a lot of jurisdictions are not addressing this issue.
Well, there's some jurisdictions that don't even have city stuff.
I agree.
I mean...
So would you discourage us from using our personal email accounts for corresponding anything with the city?
Yeah, keep it separate.
Or if you do, I recommend that you make a mirror...
So you forward it to your city emails, so it's automatically...
And put the burden, the owners, on the jurisdiction to keep it.
I just try to copy my city email address when I do it, because I never...
If someone, yeah, if someone sends it to me, to my personal, and it has to do with city, then I do, well, you've seen it. If I've sent it out to you, I also cart and copy. It's that way I don't have to worry about it, because I know it's there.
Don't put the burden on you. You don't want your servers to be...
Well, I have a personal policy that I delete on my email after three months.
Another good reason that you ought to send any city-related emails to the city's server.
No, 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 my personal emails. I don't keep more than three months' worth of personal emails. I keep everything that the city will allow me to keep on my city email account, but I don't, under normal circumstances, I certainly don't conduct any business, city business over personal email. But I may communicate with individuals that are related to the city by a personal email, but it's not to make decisions or conduct...
Right, just maybe questions.
Okay, so if we kind of land the plane somewhere...
That could have a control.
Yeah. I think what I've heard, though, and I don't think it's that necessarily hard to compile with Ken's and Sam's assistance, is that the council is very satisfied with those things that we call unprotected speech, or the more offensive-type things, that they're very willing to be included in the regulating of a policy as it relates to those, and that there would like to be some affirmative statement in here that, to the extent it's protected speech, the council is exempt from those parts of the policy and able to have whatever opinion they want to have, if it is, in fact, First Amendment protected speech. Is that what you're taking away?
So are we still going to include the last sentence in this policy? We're subject to...
Yes.
Including termination?
Well...
Well, you understand, though, and I would say it on record, it doesn't apply to... That doesn't apply to you, so even, but really, once we draft it again, the only place you can really get run afoul of it is if you engage in some of the hate speech or things of that notion, and I think this one, there would be probably self-imposed counsel. Obviously, no staff.
Couldn't result in civil action.
I guess, you know, also, to some degree, we recognize, Ken, and you can probably speak us to the order of hierarchy and importance, but the original document that created the city is the city's charter, and it prescribes for how council members are elected and how council members are removed, and that's going to control any day of the week over a policy adopted by the city. So, you know, even if this... Even if the statement's in here, it would be very, very, very easy to point to documents that are far superior to this policy to say that this would control.
Right, and again, we're not, you know, we draft policies to the law, not for the merit of not to spread, you know, future council, 10 years from now, there may be a rogue council member on here and violates this policy every day, and there needs to be some action taken by way of a censure, and you all want the horsepower to do that.
Now, does the policy include how you communicate on your... Do you watch?
Yeah, I agree.
Dick Tracy.
It's challenging.
Deirdre Smith.
Okay, I think I've got the direction I need. You got it? Okay.
I hate to bring it up, but what about appointed people?
That's a good point.
In the discussion, talking about elected officials, mainly you, what about officials that are appointed in other boards, planning committees, VZA, etc.?
Well, you've included that in...
Officials is a broad term.
No, I thought you specifically called out...
You call out board members.
Yeah, board members. Yeah, appointed board members, that's what it says. So right now, my takeaway is not change that.
That would be...
Well, it didn't make it... It doesn't work right. It's personnel, which includes officials, appointed board members, and...
Oh, and they think the O, they...
Well, I mean, I think it's... I mean, they are, in some ways, representatives of the city. I think the thing is, they're going to... It's going to be hard for us to get board members if they feel like their speech is being watched all the time, although I will tell you, there's some board members that have posted some things that I think portrayed the city in a negative light that I didn't care for, so...
I'm in violent agreement.
I think probably what we should do with that...
That's the policy now.
Yeah, to the extent that you are looking for a recommendation or an opinion, I'd say we leave it in, but I would say that we're going to have to... We're going to have to do just as good a job training our boards and committees on this policy as we are our employees, so we'll have to...
And I think the distinction, too, is telling them, "You don't represent the city in your speech," because when someone clearly identifies, you know, "I'm the board of such and such," and then they're taking... They almost sound like they're speaking for the board versus for themselves.
What we have determined tonight is that speech is a hard thing to regulate, but we'll do... We'll take a stab at that, and we'll bring something back.
That's a good debate.
Yes.
Of course, he enjoyed it, because he likes good debates.
I do need to, before you adjourn this meeting tonight, I do want to just point